And justice for all.
So, before public comment, we have election of officers. Do you have anything to say about that before we go into that? No.
No, this is totally up to the commission. Suggest you open the floor for nominations for chair and vice chair. You can do them together or separately, however you prefer.
Let's just start with chair.
I'd like to nominate Gail as chairman.
I'd like to nominate Frank Flores.
I would second the nomination for Frank Flores as chair, and I'd like to nominate Gail as vice chair.
So, we had a motion by Art, a substitu-- by Art for Gail. We had a substitute motion by Buzz.
Well, wait.
Go ahead. Oh, yeah, is there a second for Art's motion?
Art's motion was not seconded.
You're right, I'm sorry. Is there a second for Art's motion?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Vanessa. Substitute motion by Buzz, seconded by John, who also nominated Gail as a vice chair.
May I suggest that we do each of the offices separately?
Okay, that's fine, one at a time.
And I'm sorry, the motion, oh, okay, I have it. So, we have substitute motions get voted on first. So, we have a substitute motion for Frank to be reelected as chair by Commissioner Cardoza and seconded by Commissioner Sherman.
Correct.
Do you want to see if there are any further nominations?
Seeing none.
All right, shall we vote on that one?
Yes.
So, this is for Commissioner Flores to be reelected as chair. Commissioner Donaldson.
Can I pass on that since it's sort of awkward?
You can abstain. Abstain?
I'll abstain.
All right. Commissioner Hoff?
No.
Commissioner Coomerly?
May I abstain as well, or is that completely?
You can abstain.
Okay.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg is absent. Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
And Chair Flores?
Aye.
I'm not sure what this means.
I don't either.
We have three--
Bug with that one.
Three ayes, one no, and two abstentions. So, it's three--
Three out of five people.
Three out of six.
Is it possible to just say something? Make a statement?
Ask the chair.
Right ahead.
Okay. I like the idea that it all gets sort of switched around and that different people get to, you know.
Sure.
It seems more democratic that way, so I-- and I'm not sure how everyone else feels, but it just seems--
I think, I think everyone would tend to agree with that.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's just sort of where I--
A recusal.
--fall on the idea of switching it up.
Understood.
Okay.
I would like to share the same sentiment. I think we've always had rotating chairman, and I'd like to continue that policy. That's why I nominated Gail.
Well, actually--
I think Frank has done a fantastic job, but I think somebody else should take his turn.
Actually, let me clarify this. This was a substitute motion. An abstention counts as a vote. So, I mean, it's counted in the number of votes cast. So, there were a total of six votes cast, of which three were ayes. That's not a majority. So, the motion, the substitute motion did not pass. So, therefore, we vote on the original motion. Right?
Sure.
Right? Okay, the original motion was by Commissioner Hoff, seconded by Commissioner Coomerly, for Commissioner Donaldson to be chair. Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Steinberg is absent. Vice Chair Cardoza?
No.
And Chair Flores.
Yes.
All right, we have four ayes and two noes. Commissioner Donaldson is the new chair. Do you want to continue with the vice chair before you switch seats?
Why don't we go to the vice?
I would nominate Frank Flores as vice chair.
I would second that.
Okay.
Call the roll.
Uh, hang on. All right, moved by Commissioner Sherman and seconded by Commissioner Coomerly for Commissioner Flores to be vice chair. Commissioner--
Who to be vice chair?
Frank.
Commissioner Flores. Uh, let me see, how am I going to do this? Well, I'll call the roll in the same order that it was prior to the previous election.
It won't be as awkward.
Commissioner Donaldson?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Commissioner Steinberg has an excused absence. Vice Chair Cardoza?
Aye.
Chair Flores?
Aye.
Six ayes, Commissioner Flores is now the vice chair.
Excellent.
Thank you for being gracious, Frank. Appreciate it.
I move down here. I'll just move over.
Okay. All right, this is the time for a public comment for items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, we'll go to the action recap.
I had a couple of comments on the action recap.
Okay.
If I can find it. On page, uh-- three of six, down at the bottom, it said Commissioner Hoff had no comments. That's almost an impossible statement.
It's impossible.
On the surface, it's not true. I think the problem is that I made most of my comments inappropriately when I was discussing it with the applicant, and they weren't carried forward. So, I'd like to mention the two things that I was concerned about, and you could put them in where you think appropriate.
Okay.
One was that I shared many of the commissioners' comments that the restaurant was in the wrong place, that the parklet really didn't work very well for me, and that I thought that the restaurant should be on the north face of the building, facing the courtyard in the city hall. That was one comment that was left out.
Okay.
And the second one was the theater. I mentioned to the applicant that I thought because of their costs and the problem of meeting their cost budget, that it might be wise for them to give up the theater and allow the school district, who had told me personally that they were very enthused about having the theater, because then they could use it as a multipurpose place for the school, the recreation center, and the community. And I thought that was a much better place for it.
As part of the Center of Community Life?
Part of the Center of Community Life. The applicant, and to be fair, the applicant response was, "Well, the art center doesn't work without the theater."
Right.
So, and maybe that should be in there as well, but I'd like those comments to be part of the record.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a comment. I made comments about the fact that I thought the space allocated for the historical society was grossly inadequate.
Thank you.
And didn't have room for storage of historic documents, photos, things of that sort. But the administrator said that it was all going to be put in a digital form, which I don't think makes any sense in terms of storing historical information.
I'd also like to add a comment. And this is also on page three of five about the ECA. The last line in the paragraph says, "He felt cafe kitchen space didn't work well." I'd like to add to that, that I also recommended that the architect work with a catering company to figure out logistics of how catering can be done there effectively.
So, we did also have a special meeting a week ago Monday where we walked through the site. Are there going to be minutes from that prepared at all, or was that?
Yes, there are always minutes prepared for every planning commission meeting, special or regular. I expect those minutes will be fairly cursory. They will simply indicate that the commission walked through the building.
Okay, but there would be an opportunity for us to fill in more of our comments that we made at that time as well?
I guess, yeah. Did you get notes of their comments? Yeah, okay.
So, is that all the additions or revisions to the minutes?
So, that was revisions by Commissioners Hoff, Cardoza, and Sherman.
Anybody here to move approval?
I had one other. Excuse me. Is this the right one? Yeah. Excuse me just a minute.
Can I butt in, though? On the commissioner comments for the 7/11, we took a straw vote. Six commissioners voted yes to the store being opened 4:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. That's correct, right?
Yeah, 12:00 a.m. is midnight.
No, I understand 12:00 a.m. is midnight. It was 4:00 a.m., not 6:00 a.m.
Yes, yes.
I have no further comments then.
Okay.
Okay, so moved.
A second.
Approved.
So, okay, so Commissioner Flores moved to approve, and Commissioner Sherman seconds? Okay, is that without objection?
Without objection. The minutes are approved as revised. The director's report, Charlie.
All right. The city council has met twice since your last meeting. They met on July 5th and July 19th. The July 5th meeting was fairly short, just a couple of items that I think are of interest to the commission, and that was the two ordinances, mending the zoning, one regarding personal services and light wholesaling and distribution in the interim zoning regulations, and the other pertain to amendments to the significant and residential building demolition provisions. Both those ordinances had been introduced in June and had second reading on the consent calendar on July 5th and will take effect on August 4th. On July 19th, the council accepted as complete the pedestrian and bicycle path in Linear Park that was constructed by Pixar between Park Avenue and 45th Street and named it Joseph Emery Park in honor of the city's founder and in recognition of the location of his house, which is memorialized by a plaque in the park.
Who suggested the name?
It was suggested by staff.
The mayor gave you credit for it.
Oh, well, I'm staff. And, yes, the mayor and council agreed with that recommendation. The fence will be coming down any day now. I believe there are a few odds and ends that need to be tied up before that happens, but it should, it's imminent that that park will be open to the public. The council approved a noise waiver request for Bank of America on two weekends between August 27th and October 10th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. to replace HVAC equipment on the roof of the building at 4120 San Pablo Avenue. The council also passed the first reading of an ordinance to reestablish our redevelopment agency pursuant to the so-called Alternative Voluntary Redevelopment Program, which says you can continue to exist as long as you give a whole bunch of money to the state. This will require the payment of about $13.2 million to the state this year and another $3 million every year thereafter, but it will enable the city to continue with our redevelopment activities. Concerning the business tax, the council passed a number of resolutions that put two items on the upcoming November ballot related to the business tax. One will increase the cap, and the other one will increase the tax rate to 0.1% of gross receipts. And finally, certainly, last but certainly not least, and I should have probably mentioned this first, the council reappointed Commissioners Donaldson and Cardoza. So, my congratulations to both of you on your reappointments.
You're here.
We are continuing to work on the zoning update and reviewing various sections. The next steering committee meeting is scheduled for August 23rd. At that time, we will be reviewing the dimensional intensity and density standards. We will have for the committee a detailed outline of the entire code and also the latest versions of the zoning maps, the use classification definitions, and the matrix. And then, at the September meeting, I just discussed this with Deborah today, so this is, this, our current thinking is that we hope to have in Septem-- hello? You still hear me? We hope to have in September a comprehensive review of that use classification and zoning matrix and have the steering committee go through. And they've seen it already a couple of times, but they've never actually commented on it, gone through the list of all the use classifications, all the zoning districts, and let us know whether or not we think we got it right in terms of what uses should be permitted in which district. We think that will take a while, and we want to do fairly broad notification about that so that the community and property owners and stakeholders will be aware of it. But our work, our staff work on that piece, is substantially finished. We've been finished with that for quite a while, and we think that we might as well put that to bed. So, because when the committee gets the entire code to look at, that's a big chunk of it. If we can get that out of the way early on, then we can go through the rest of the code that much faster. So, in September, we hope to have the committee's review of that matrix. That doesn't mean, of course, that whatever the committee decides in September then can't be changed, because it will, of course, be coming back to the committee for final blessing of the whole code, but at least they'll have had one shot at it. And I know of at least one member of the community, one property owner, who is very interested in that discussion and would like to try to sway the committee's thinking about certain things.
So, Charlie, will the draft be put on the website so that interested people can look at it and make comments?
Right, yeah, it will be. I believe the zoning updates during committee packets are always posted on the website. So, right, that's the zoning update. And then, a couple of other items. The Park Avenue Festival, I previously told you I think that it was going to be on, I can't remember the date, September 17th, maybe? That has changed. We are, as you know, planning a festival to celebrate the completion of the Park Avenue improvements, and now it is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, September 15th, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. in conjunction with a Chamber of Commerce mixer. That is a regular night for a Chamber Mixer Night, so instead of having conflicting events, they're just going to move the mixer to Park Avenue. And we, they have a sponsor who will be paying for food and entertainment and stuff, and so hopefully, it will be a big, a big party down there. The Krubner House, as probably most of you know, at 5507 Bowdrie, was assembled as planned on Saturday, July 9th. I did see several of you out there. I was out there all day. Mira was there as well, as well as a number of other staff members. And it was pretty interesting, pretty exciting. There was an article about it in The Chronicle a couple of days later, I don't know if you saw that.
Is it finished now?
No, they still have some site work to do. They have to finish the, do the exterior finishing of the, of the building of the house. They still have to finish the landscaping. So, they expect, I believe he expects to be moved in by Labor Day. So, a couple of months, month and a half. And finally, as you may have heard, the Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory issued an RFP for a second campus, and a number of cities and developers responded to the RFP, including TMG and Wareham for a site in Emeryville. LBNL is now holding a series of community meetings in the cities that have made the shortlist for that RFP, of which we are one. Our community meeting is going to be here in the council chambers on Monday, August 8th, starting at 7:30 p.m. And the purpose of that meeting is to show community support for the proposal to locate the second campus in Emeryville. So, you are all certainly welcome and invited to attend that meeting. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
I just wanted to comment on the LBNL meeting. I know that they've been having these meetings in Richmond and Alameda, and they've been filling theaters and city halls full of people supporting the location in different places because it will result in a lot of jobs and a lot of economic boost to the area that the lab is located in. So, I also understand that there are a number of jobs that are currently in Emeryville that are under the auspices of the lab, and presumably, those would move out of Emeryville if the lab moves somewhere else. So, if people are interested in coming and hearing what the plans are, it would be a good idea to come.
Does the property go off the tax roll?
Um, I'm not sure. I think it depends on whether it's owned by LBNL or whether it's owned by a private party and leased to them. But my understanding is it's likely that it could result in property going off the tax roll.
Sounds like it's worth at least coming and hearing what the plans are.
I would note that the proposal that they're vetting at this community meeting is a little bit-- well, it's actually two proposals that have been submitted by Wareham. One is for, actually, three. One is for the campus in Emeryville on the Wareham property, possibly including TMG property. One is for a campus in West Berkeley on the Wareham property. And the other is for a split campus that would be between Berkeley and Emeryville on the two Wareham properties. And all of those proposals are going to be considered here at the Emeryville meeting on August 8th.
Should be interesting. Any other questions for Charlie? Okay, we have a number of public hearings this evening, five, it looks like. The first one is the CrossFit Oakland.
Good evening, Chair Donaldson, Commissioners. I'll be presenting a conditional use permit for a new indoor sports and recreation use in an existing building. This building is part of an industrial complex at the north end of town. This is Hollis Street running north into Berkeley here, and this is 67th, which the property faces onto. Here's the Greenway, and the nearest residential project is Liquid Sugar behind the project. This shows the whole complex. Again, Hollis Street, 67th and 66th on the other side. The property in question is outlined in red here, and this is a shared parking lot for the whole complex. Zooming in, we have 67th Street, the front entrance connecting by a concrete walk, the shared parking lot with the four designated parking spaces adjacent. I think that the mouse just froze, so I'm going to arrow through and try to direct your attention without it. Again, the shared parking lot to the left. The rear exit is at the bottom left of the building, and there are three external lights along the building wall onto the parking lot. There is also a small plot of what is currently dirt and grass that will be landscaped as part of the project that's adjacent to the 67th Street entrance. This is the floor plan. The left is the north entrance towards 67th. There is a front desk and retail area at the front door. The main exercise area is the majority of the floor plan. There is a wall along the back area of the exercise space, which separates it from the storage space in the rear. That bottom section below the storage is a separately walled exit vestibule that goes out to the rear exit. And the top area that's not colored will be a range of bathrooms, office, and additional storage. The reason for the subdivisions is to avoid a building requirement. At 3,000 square feet and above, the city requires that the space be sprinkled, so this space is below that requirement by walling off the different sections.
By doing what?
By walling off the different sections. So, the yellow storage space has a full hard wall, and then I believe there's a partial wall between the blue retail area in the front and the main exercise space, whereas the whole pink exercise space is all open. Here are pictures of the existing project. The upper left is the grassy area that will be landscaped, the walk up to the front door, and you can see the parking spaces. On the right top is the interior space, taken from the front door. Bottom left, you can see the designated parking spaces, one of which will be handicapped with the appropriate loading zone. And then, the bottom right is a picture from 67th looking through the shared parking lot entrance, and unfortunately, darkened here. In the back left is the building itself. The hours of the operation will be 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. Saturday and Sunday. Classes will be limited to one at a time with a maximum of 15 people. There will be two full-time employees and three to four part-time trainers, usually with one employee and one trainer on staff at any given time. As far as conformity, this use is required to have this conditional use permit to operate in the industrial zone, and it does conform to the land use goal in the North Hollis Area Urban Design Plan. For parking, there is no specific requirement for this use. We do have a requirement for a gym use, but that is quite different from this use in that in a gym, people can show up at any time. There's an unpredictable number of people. Here, people sign up for classes, and so they know exactly how many people they'll have. And again, there's the limit of the class and size. So, staff has made a recommendation of five parking spaces. This is slightly different from what is in your staff report. In speaking to the property owner, I was made aware that should all of the properties in the entire complex, which have access to that shared lot, be rented at the same time, there may be a parking squeeze. So, the four designated spaces would remain. However, the property owner would like the ability to limit access to the shared lot outside of those four spaces to one. That is because the entire complex was parked at a ratio of one space per 1,000 square feet. This space is 5,000 square feet, so that matches that ratio. Until that demand is present, however, CrossFit does have the ability to use the lot at a higher level. The owner simply wants to have the ability to regulate at the level it was parked at. Let me know if that wasn't clear. As far as bike parking, one exterior and one interior bike parking space is required. None are proposed currently, and so that condition is part of the standard conditions of approval and is here. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit for indoor sports and recreation, subject to the attached conditions of approval with the slightly changed parking condition of approval as listed. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
What number is the parking?
Six, A1, I think.
Does the parking requirement go by zone or by the specific use?
It goes by use.
Does this use only require five parking spaces?
The current zoning code does not have a required parking number for every single use listed in the code. So, for the type of use that we have presented here, there is no specified requirement, which the zoning code then says staff should make a recommendation to the planning commission. Our recommendation is five spaces. So, parking is number six on page eight of the conditions of approval. A1 is the car parking, or A1A, I should say. So, it currently, in your staff report, reads "A minimum of four vehicular parking spaces designated for CrossFit specific use, of which two can be compact spaces and access to any," excuse me, and this should be "unoccupied parking spaces in the shared lot on 67th." That will be changed to read "a minimum of four," excuse me, "of five vehicular parking spaces, of which two can be compact, four designated, and a minimum of one in the shared lot," or language to that effect.
Any other questions for Steph or Arlie?
Is the applicant here? Does the applicant wish to say anything?
This is Robyn from CrossFit. Hi, this is my first commission meeting, so forgive me. I just want to thank Arlie. She's been really helpful in this. It's been kind of a harsh process for us, a steep learning curve for a really small business. Can you not hear me?
We can hear you, yeah.
Most people have no problem hearing me. Anyway, we have a really small business. We do a small group fitness instruction. We teach some basic skills, and then we put people through workouts, and we teach them nutrition. But we do do it in a really small group setting, so I just want to make sure that that's understood, that it would not work with our program to have large groups. So strength and conditioning for functional fitness, we teach first responders. We teach regular people. We have a really great relationship with many of the groups in Emeryville, such as Pixar, Title IX, and then just the neighbors around. We've been doing business here for several years, actually, and we've grown quite fond of Emeryville, and we'd really like to stay here. We did not know we had to get permits. We've never had to go through this before. This is our fifth move, and we just move in, we throw our weights out there, and we just go for it. So again, apologies for the ignorance, but anyway, we're trying to fix everything right now. So thanks for helping us out. And I wanted to answer any questions you might have about our use. It's a little bit unique, and I can clarify any questions you might have.
Do you ever do work with any of the senior programs in Emeryville?
We have a seniors class, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. We don't actually directly market to anybody, but we do have a group of seniors that come on a regular basis. They've actually been our most faithful group, so.
Great.
Yeah, and we also really believe in community outreach. We have monthly community days where people can come for free and try us out. We've taught high school kids, and we'd like to continue to do that more and more, to get out there in the community and just kind of spread the gospel of CrossFit.
I wanted to say that I am a member of CrossFit, so I know well of this program, and it's quite good. As full disclosure.
Yes, Vanessa's a wonderful client.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this, come forward. There is a sign-up sheet to the left. When you're done, you can.
Hi, I'm Larry Farb. I own the particular property that we're discussing. I just heard there was a comment about the parking, so I thought I would clarify that. There is a large shared parking lot that has a surplus of spaces with the current tenancy. It's not related to vacancies at all. It's just there's 80,000 feet of space in the complex, and we generally assign a space per 1,000 feet, but the current users are mostly industrial users. And there's one building that's rented for 10 years that's mostly a warehouse and has about seven or eight employees working in it. So there's, right now, a very large surplus of spaces, which is foreseeable for the whole tenancy of this particular tenant. So if that is an issue, I just wanted to clarify that particular point.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Close the public hearing? Any Commissioner comments or discussion?
I move approval.
Who did this?
I second that with the additional parking condition.
Okay, I did have one correction to the conditions of approval on page four. There's a list of items that probably needs to be edited down a little bit.
Right.
It's a typo matter. So with the revisions to the parking requirement, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Cardoza.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly.
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman.
Aye.
Vice Chair Flores.
Aye.
Chair Donaldson.
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the City Council within 15 days.
Thank you.
Thank you. I saw the people out there with the weights this weekend. It was inspiring, so. Okay, so our next, our next public hearing is the Towers Sign Program? Thank you, Maru.
Good evening, Chair Donaldson, Commission members. This is a sign program for the Towers buildings, which we know as the Watergate Towers, Towers 1, 2, and 3. As you may know, the property has undergone change in ownership, and the new owners are in the process of doing a number of improvements to the site, and what's in front of you is the sign program. So the sign program is basically divided into two things. One is the replacement of the existing permanent signs, and these are primarily vehicular signs and building identity signs. And the second is a program for building identity and retail signs for future tenants. So I'll start with the permanent exterior sign plan, and this is the site plan. The numbers are the Towers, the Watergate 1, 2, and 3, just for your direction. And we have Powell Street here. This is the three-story parking garage attached to Towers 3 and 2. So you see a number of dots here, and I'll go through them very quickly in terms of what they are and what is happening. This is the primary monument sign. It's a replacement. As you can see, the existing wall stays. It's going to get spruced up, and what's going to happen is a dark gray aluminum panel is going to be mounted on the wall, and you can see the channel letters, which are about four feet tall. Then each building, each, three of each Towers will have two signs, which will indicate the address for the building. And these are three-foot-tall numerals which are mounted on the interface and will be internally illuminated. There are four monument signs around the campus, and they all look similar, except, of course, the change in the number, the address number. And what, again, the wall is going to stay. It gets spruced up, and what's going to happen is there's going to be a dark gray aluminum panel, which is going to be mounted onto a new white cabinet panel, which is bolted on the wall. So here's the wall, here's the white cabinet, and this is the gray panel.
Maru, will that white panel be illuminated from within?
No.
It's just?
It's just to help the aluminum panel. There are about eight vehicular signs, again, spread around the three Towers, and again, it's going to be on the existing wall, and you'll have a dark gray aluminum panel mounted on, again, a white cabinet panel, which will be bolted to the wall. There'll be one sign, set of signs, on the garage entrances of Towers 2 and 3, and these are, as you can see, dark gray panels with pin-mounted painted letters, which would be deep halo LED letters. Now, to the second part of the sign application is the tenant sign program, and this pertains to the retail tenants that they have, each building has, on the ground level and the actual building identity sign. So let's start with the retail identity. They are asking for two options. There'll be four signs on each of the building, and they're about 22 square feet in size, and they are sign cabinets with push-through tenant graphics. And the other option is similar in size, but just different configuration. Now, the actual building, building identity signs, which will go on the top of the buildings. There are two main types. One is a bigger one, which is about three, which is no more than 324 square feet, and a smaller one, which is about 144 square feet. And this will kind of tell you where they're going to be going, and each tower will have two signs each.
Where would they be?
I'm sorry?
That each tower would have two signs?
Correct.
What facing?
Well, you can see they're different faces, and if you look at the site plan, let me take it back to you. So for example, on Tower 1, it's difficult to see, but the red line, that's where the building identity signs are. One here, one here. On this side, this is Tower 3, here's the sign, and the sign essentially facing, getting views from IAT. On Tower 1, you have the sign right here, and the other sign right here. Is that clear?
There are already two signs on Tower 3, aren't there?
That is correct. That's the NetSol signs. That will be removed, because NetSol are no longer tenants. So this is another rendering of, taken from IAT, facing east. In order to approve the signs, the commission must find that the signs are compatible with the neighborhood, readable, and integrated with the architectural features. We believe that signs are an improvement to the existing signs, and therefore the following findings can be made. That concludes my presentation. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. The architect is also here, and he also has a presentation.
When we approved the sign for the business, which is no longer there at the building at 2,000, we made them put the sign on the north, we made them put the signs on the north and south facing, and now they're moving it to the west, I mean to the east, excuse me.
Correct. They have changed one, sign of one location. The other one remains the same. So this one, the smaller, the sign, the NetSol sign that is existing on the smaller length of the building wall, that remains the same, but this one is the new, is a new location.
Very controversial when we approved the prior signs, and it was my understanding we made them move it to the north side rather than the east side. Is that correct? Do you have any recollection of that?
I don't have a recollection of that.
But you certainly have the option of doing that with this application, if you wish.
You mentioned, on page 11, it shows the entrance to the building with this address 1900.
Page 11 of the plans?
Yeah, the plan. Did you say there would be two addresses for the building?
On different side of the walls, yes. So, so this is the, right, so it's on one side of the wall, and let me just look.
You mean on opposite sides of the building?
It's the opposite side, the two long lengths of the buildings.
Opposite side.
Of each building.
Will each entrance have that canopy that's illustrated there, which is not there now? Is that?
No, each entrance will not have the canopy. This one that they show is, has been approved, and I believe it's under construction.
The canopy?
The canopy is under construction.
The canopy has not been approved, but is part of an administrative design review application. I do believe that every major doorway has a large canopy.
Pardon?
I do believe that every major doorway does have a large canopy. So the 1900 building has one on each side, and then the other two buildings have just one each, I believe.
And all of the old signs that are still in use will be grandfathered in. Is that correct? Like the Summit Bank sign and?
All the, which?
Are they getting changed as well?
The tenant signs.
The tenant signs.
What I have not shown you, that'll just stay as it is.
Okay.
If I could just clarify, perhaps this is clear and obvious, but this application is actually kind of in two parts. One part is for permanent signage that won't change, like this monument sign and the directional sign and so forth. The other part, the tenant signage that will change in the future, that effectively constitutes a master sign program, that aspect of it, which means that in the future, as they come in for changing tenant signage, either at the top of the building or down at the front, we will look at this assuming you approve this, we will look at this approval and make sure that those tenant signs comply with it, and then we can approve them administratively at that point.
Anything off of that in square footage or colors would come back to us.
If it's a major change from what the commission approves, we will bring it back to the commission.
And just so it's clear, for the sign program, for the big building signs and the retail signs, there are no colors being proposed. It depends on the tenants.
Okay, are there any other questions for Maru? Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
So Scott Gross from Gensler Architects is here.
Thanks, Maru.
So as part of the overall sort of upgrade of the site and the cleaning up of the site, the signage program was thought to be modernized to help bring in new tenants and to help fill up the tenant space within the buildings, because currently they're a little bit low, and we're hoping to upgrade the whole entire site to make it a much more amenable site for new tenants.
Could you raise the mic up?
Sure. So as part of that, that's why on the exterior rooftop signage, we're trying to make that as an amenity, as a selling point to new tenants, to come in and show them that we do have a preapproval to put a large tenant into the top of the building. Currently, from what I understand from the owner rep who's here, is the current NetSol signs are gone. They were removed two weeks ago. So there's currently no rooftop signage at all up there. The Summit Bank sign will probably be removed as part of the redesign so that all the tenant signage has the same feel and the look underneath the soffit, hanging under the spandrel of all the buildings. The whole idea is to sort of integrate the site into our campus, give it a more modern feel, and make it more amenable for people who want to come and, you know, work and have offices in Emeryville. The presentation I have is basically the same presentation that Maru has, and I just brought it along in case somebody wanted to ask further questions on it. These are some of the materials that we are looking at. We're looking at painted aluminum. Everything will be used aluminum with silk screen paints and dimensional letters on the signage, the white panels that are behind the vehicular signs.
I have a question then about materials. On your tenant identity signs, the big ones on the building.
Mm-hmm.
In your note on page 27, it just says aluminum pan channel letter forms with internal white LEDs, return and face colors to be determined by tenant, which is what you mentioned. So is that, where is the pan, and are we saying that the sides of the letters and the face are in acrylic color yet to be determined?
The returns will probably be metal or aluminum. Usually, that's how they're constructed, so they hide the lighting inside of it, and then the fronts are usually a color. But some tenants do come in and have rounded edges on some of their signage, or they have the whole thing painted. I think NetSol was completely blue.
Yeah, it was completely blue.
So until a tenant is actually signed and brought up, we don't know what colors are going to be yet. But that's something that, according to Maru, will come back before the design review of whatever sign is going to go up there.
Would you have two different signs on the roof of each building for two different tenants?
I think right now NetSol has two signs for one tenant, and I think it would depend upon the occupancy of each tenant. If two large tenants take up a lot of the building, then there might be two different signs on that building to entice a large sports space of retail rental.
Could you talk to us a little bit about the quality of the illumination in any of these signs, both the permanent ones and the tenant ones?
Sure. This one's going to be a LED internally lit sign. It's freestanding dimensional letters that are pin-mounted off the wall. There's uplights that are currently on the grass that will uplight that whole entire sign at night. It's a really nice sign, actually. It has a nice metal, painted metal return. It's got a nice quality, too. It's got green, a lot of greenery behind it. I think it modernizes the whole look of it. The name is changed, obviously, from Watergate Towers to the Towers Emeryville, to sort of update it and bring it, you know, more into a more modern feel. These signs are going to be painted aluminum returns. They're going to be wall-mounted onto the spandrel face of the building. The front faces are day/night acrylic, so during the day, they look like a dark black or gray, so they can read against the white buildings. And at night, they're internally lit so that they light up white in the evenings. It's really nice.
What would be the color when they're illuminated at night?
White.
White.
It's sort of a slightly off-white, the day/night acrylic that does it, so.
So it wouldn't be multiple colors, then?
No, no, no. No, it's just going to be either a dark, it's like a dark grayish-black during the day when there's no light, and then it becomes a white with a slightly gray tone.
This is the signs at the top of the building.
The signs at the top of the building will depend upon whatever the tenant.
So they could be multiple colors?
They could be, but I would tend to believe most of them try to keep it readable and simple, but it would depend upon the logo and the branding of the tenant.
So it's fair to say all lit signs outside of the tenant signs are white LED?
Yes.
Everything else is yet to be determined by the tenant, and that's, in this submittal, it's agreed by, or discussed with the planning director for the colors?
Yes.
All right?
Yes.
And is it possible to control the level of illumination on these signs if they're too bright? Can you turn them down?
Yeah, we do actually have, on these signs, we'll have ballasts that are dimmable ballasts. The front sign, I don't know if we've decided if that was going to be, but if that's one of the conditions, we can easily add a dimmable ballast on them.
I have a couple questions. Could you go back to the screen which shows the entrance way to the building? Yep. When you're standing there and looking at that sign, you can also see the garage entrance.
Behind it?
Yeah, you could, you could, you can see the entrance of the garage. And I'm wondering, putting the Towers Emeryville on the garage seems almost redundant. Why not just say public parking, which is what it is, isn't it?
Well, currently the problem here is there's a lot of greenery behind this, that you don't really see the garage. And the reason that we're adding the signage to the garage entrances is we're finding a lot of people, when they turn in, are not seeing that they can turn, they need to turn right away to go into the public parking.
I think the signage is good on the garage, but why not say what it is? It's a public garage, public parking, rather than the name of the towers.
I, I think that was just part of the design sense of like establishing it as part of the whole campus look for visitor parking to have a place.
Oh, I see what you mean. Why doesn't it say it's parking?
Oh, you're, you're, you can literally see the entrance, if you're standing across the street. You've, you've got the name of your building, which is great, and then you repeat it again. But it seems to be, it would be more instructive if that sign said public parking, because that's what it is. And I, I know, I, I walk there and people will stop me and say, where do you park in this place?
Yeah, I think, I think people have had a problem finding where to park there.
So that, that's why I thought if it said that, that would make it clear that that's what this building is for, rather than the en-
Are there any tertiary signs to there that say parking, right?
Yeah, all the, all the vehicular signage along the streets are going to say parking now.
Are there any parking that is not public? Is there?
Yeah, there is employee only parking and there is card, cardholder parking on the site.
All the surface parking is employee parking, isn't it?
Employee parking. And currently, visitors are only allowed to go in that first gate. But what they're doing is we're changing, so both entrances to the garage are now going to be accessible by visitor parking to get a ticket. So they'll be able to go in the north and south entrance of the parking garage.
Anyway, I, I would, I, I, I think it should say public parking, but I, I, I'll let that go. The other question I had is, on, on the tenant names, you have option one and option two.
Yes.
Is that for us to decide, or does each tenant get his choice?
They were, the reason that we ended up doing an option, I think we got stuck on our...
Hmm.
There we go. The reason we ended up doing an option one and option two on the tenant guidelines is currently they signed a new tenant to come in, and the new tenant had a parameter of their design type that looked like the option one.
I'm sorry, say that again.
The new tenant that's coming in, special, which is specialties, is coming in. They have a design type sign that they wanted to hold on to. So in order to allow them to have their sign type, as well as other tenants to be able to have the same option of breaking out of the option two standard, we offered an option one or option two to all tenants. So that way it's fair for all tenants to have this extra space.
What's wrong with having, just, what's wrong with having everybody have option two, which I think is a much better sign?
I think it's because the tenant that is currently coming in has a sign type that has been sort of agreed upon that they're going to try and get in.
That it'll only fit into option one?
Well, that's, that's their style of design that they have. So we were trying to sort of be amenable to them to make it, you know, pleasurable for them to come to the site.
That's the tail wagging the dog.
Sort of, yeah. We're trying to make, we want the tenant to be happy and to definitely come in, so.
But, a, a tenant that's required to meet the requirements will be happy. I, I would opt, I, I would suggest that we have only option two, but that's my personal view.
We can certainly talk to the tenants and see if it's a problem.
Let's keep it to the questions for the applicant now, and then we'll...
I'm sorry.
Yeah. And we can discuss it later.
I'm always getting ahead of myself.
No, that's okay. I totally understand.
Okay. Can you talk a little bit more about the materials on the monument and the vehicular signs, the white panels in the back?
Sure. On the main monument?
Not the entry one, but the ones with the white panels.
Okay. These are, what we're going to do is we're going to refurbish, patch, and clean the existing concrete bases, which are really heavy concrete bases. The panels that are going on are going to be painted aluminum.
Mm-hmm.
The lettering is going to be a dimensional lettering that is laser cut out, and it's going to be painted with a white car paint, so it has a nice gloss to it and a reflective quality. We added the white panel that is actually going to be a car paint finish as well, so it has a nice clean finish that stuff doesn't stick to. It also keeps off salt and keeps corrosion away much better. We added those white panels because of the dark and all the, the greenery that's around to make it more readable, because we were finding a lot of people are not finding their way around the property, clearly. So we wanted to make sure that the signs were really readable, easily to find people around the property, so people aren't driving around the property looking for signage. Plus, there's a lot of plantings that go on that tended to cover currently what's there on the bottom. So we wanted to raise the signs up enough that they wouldn't be covered by plantings and landscaping.
So is there any lighting in these?
No lighting. These are not going to be lit at night. There is, there is enough property lighting, we felt, that we didn't need to add more light onto these signs.
Any other questions for the applicant, for the architect? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and open it for commission discussion.
I think this is really a good improvement. One of the things that I noticed, excuse me, is the, the current signing, signage really has problems with readability, especially for the parking, identifying the parking garage. The monument signs, the, the lettering kind of blends into the background. And, so I don't, I think what's there doesn't work very well. I think this is a great improvement. And I think you're, it's a really nice, modern way to use, utilize the existing monuments and update them. And I think in general, I, I have no negative comments. I think everything is really well done. I was a little concerned with the size of the lettering in the main entry until I went there and actually looked at it and saw the, the, kind of the cluttered background with the, the trees and shrubbery and parking garage in the back. And I really came to conclude that lettering that size is really necessary to, to make the emphasis and, and make the statement. And I think it's very high quality.
Well, I have some difficulty with the rooftop signs in that it seems to me we had a very lengthy discussion when we approved the prior signs, and that definitely they shouldn't be allowed on the east side of the building. Should only be on the north and south, as we did the last time. And they're much larger, it looks to me, than the signs previously approved. And since there were no signs on any of the tops of the buildings when we previously approved it for, I think, two thousand, the building at two thousand and tall, I wonder what the long-term history of this development has been, whether there have been signs on the roof previously that, on the top floor that have been removed, or have there never been signs on the top floor? Do you know?
I don't recall. I, not that I know of. Do you know?
Nexol, the first time I did any signs.
Okay. Maru says the Nexol signs were the first rooftop signs that she ever handled. And that she's been here, what, seven years, eight years? And I don't remember any before that.
Yeah, I, I would, I'm, I'd like to discourage the signs on the top of the building.
Right now, Tower one has a north and a south. Tower two has a north and a south, and then it's Tower three that has a south and an east.
Right.
And it's the, that one sign that you have a problem with?
No, actually, it's all the signs.
That's the only one that's facing east?
Yeah, but I, I think, I question why we need, why we should have signs on the roofs of the buildings anyway.
You're questioning all of them?
It makes them jump out, and the building's probably been there twenty years. And other than this one that we approved about three or four years ago, there've never been signs up there.
I would note that on another project, it's not high rises, but mid-rise office buildings on Christie Avenue, the Bay Center offices, those black glass buildings that face the freeway. The commission previously approved several years ago a master sign program that does allow for some similar kind of signage at the tops of those buildings. And I believe that those signs are there now.
Buzz, I, I used to be a tenant in that building when it was Consolidated Capital. They had their name on that building for ten years.
Oh, they did?
At the top, yeah. Consolidated Capital.
At, at Watergate Towers?
Yeah, well, and, and building number three, we were part owners of the building, the Consolidated Capital Corporation. It was a globe, and the name Consolidated Capital was on, was on that building for many, many years.
Oh, okay.
Uh, how does these signs, but addressing your question, how does the size of these proposed signs compare with what the existing sign that's up there that we approved?
The Nexol.
It's, the Nexol signs are actually a little bigger than what are being proposed. The, the sign is twenty-five percent of the building length. So even the shorter sign on the shorter building length is twenty-five percent. And the bigger signs on the bigger length is twenty-five percent. So in proportion, they are the same, and they are slightly smaller than the Nexol signs.
Smaller than the-
Slightly smaller, yeah.
Oh, okay. So they're smaller than the existing sign?
Yeah, I have a concern about the building top signs too, not so much in terms of the size, but in terms of the illumination, because I think that one of the things that is really unattractive that we have had happen in the city over the years is a whole lot of really bright illuminated signs. If you're up on Grizzly Peak looking at the view, you see the Hilton Garden Inn flashing out there. And not flashing literally, but I think that if we are going to go ahead with signage on the top of the buildings, we have to be very, very careful about the illumination. And I would definitely want to see a, a condition of approval in there that addresses that, the illumination and the color. My other concern about this sign program, I do think it's an improvement. The signs out there are tired and they need to be fixed up, and they need to be modernized. And on the whole, I think this is a really clean approach. The vehicle signs, though, are showing up as being like nine feet tall for directions to parking. And that, I think those, when you're walking by those, you're going to feel like you're walking by billboards. I went out there and it's really, there's a lot of parking signs that are located adjacent to walkways. And the dimensions on those, I think, are overkill. And I would like to see those reduced a little bit in height so that at least you don't feel like you're walking by a small building. It looks like the sign face itself is, it's nine feet plus another foot off the, off the bottom here. So it's over ten feet tall to direct you to parking, and that seems a little massive.
Isn't that also directing you to building nineteen hundred, two thousand and twenty-two hundred as well?
Looking at page sixteen. There are some shorter monument signs that are the identity signs. Those are about six feet. About six feet.
After Nexol was approved, I don't know how many years ago that was, Buzz and I were invited to, well, everyone was invited to go to their grand opening up on the top floor. So Buzz and I went over there, and it got dark, and Buzz lives over there, and I bike over there all the time. And we got lost. We got lost parking. We parked finally, and we got lost trying to find the building. The addresses were just...
What building were you going to?
I, you got me, two thousand. So we walked around and around and just trying to find our way, even in the building, we had a hard time figuring it out.
Well, doors were locked. They didn't have anybody to receive you.
There was no security, and we just, we had run of the building for a while.
They, we couldn't get even into the-
Oh, we couldn't get those to work. So in general, it was a confusing process. But I agree with John that this is a really big improvement. And I would say that, yes, when you're up on Grizzly Peak or any of the Oakland Hills, you can see Emeryville down there, Bay Street and, and the peninsula. But I guess that's the point. And as much as it's highly illuminated even without these signs, it's really the freeway and the, and the mall, and that's just never going to change. And if we're going to put lights up and we're going to illuminate big, we've already got these big buildings, you know, we're trying to bring notice to them even at night, because it's Emeryville, and that's what we have over there. We're at the corner of some really nice office buildings. And my assumption is that this building owner wants to get some tenants in there, and they want to be able to put up some big illuminated signs. And this is a tactful way of doing it, and the carrot we get is the signage down below, so people don't get lost. So other than the east-facing sign, because I do remember there were some issues, there might have even been some people here who were, had a problem with it. Couple of commissioners who are no longer on this commission really had issue with it, and I think that was where the real issues came from. That was really it. Other than, than that, and I, I would, they might be open to putting it on the north side. I, I, I think it's still fine on the east side. I'm fine with all of it. And then with Gail's comment that they're all dimmable, we, we've had in the past asked that the planning director would buy, I guess it would be by complaint, complaint-driven? After a certain amount of time, or commissioner?
Yeah, I think the key is that they are dimmable, that they're, the, the equipment exists so they can turn the knob and make them not so bright.
Right. Who establishes how bright they should be? I guess it would be you, Charlie.
Well, they would start out at some illumination, and then if it was complaint-driven, again, if we drove by and thought it was too bright, we might make a call. Or people who live in your building, which would really be the, the big, big effect, the people who live in PPP. As to the options, I think that you have tenants that sometimes are logo-driven on, on their signage. They have a big logo. They don't really do much. If I think about some of the blade signs we approved down at Avalon, they had, they just had a logo out there, the dog, it kind of said, well, I can't remember the name of that company. Or a shoe. Well, we sell shoes, as opposed to just putting your name on it. And, and these two are close enough that I think having a couple of options, again, might help to rent those spaces, get retailers in there, because then they have an option to be different than the guy next door. Well, his sign looks like my sign. Well, no, my sign has a logo and then the name of my company. So having a couple of options, certainly for signage, is a great marketing tool, another great marketing tool. And my assumption is all of this, like that sign application we got from TMG, is to attract retailers, which is a bad market right now. So that's my comment type.
Buzz, when you, your comment about the, the signs on the roof, right now they're proposing them on the east side and the west side?
Well, they only have one on the east side and, and-
No, I mean, isn't that, is the plan to have two so, tenant signs on each building?
If I can, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, they're, on building number two, I believe, they're proposing that there'd be one on the east side as well as the south side.
No, it's just Tower three.
Tower three.
Tower three.
Tower three, it would be east and south, and Towers one and two, it would be north and south. So two on each building, north and south sides, except Tower three where-
Sign on the west side of Building three doesn't-
No, it's the east side of Building.
No, I'm sorry. If, a sign on the west side of that building doesn't do anything unless you're in a boat.
I guess the idea would be to put it on the north side? But it's so close to Tower two that it really wouldn't make any sense.
Well, it's-
It would be visible from eighty.
Might be visible, it might be.
It's visible from the whole-
It's visible from the freeway.
Yeah.
Might be.
And everything east of the freeway.
They had a-
Do you think, addressing your question, Gail, about the, the monument sign?
Pardon me?
The, addressing your question about the monument sign, do you think the reason they made it so tall is that people could, could see over someone walking? In other words, they wanted above the level of a, of a person?
I don't think we have enough walkers to-
No. The signs tend to be between the, on the planting strip, between the walkway and the street, so.
I guess it would be this, page twenty-five? That one in the middle, that's the one that's, that center, Tower three, that's facing east, correct? The sun is shining on it.
It's, well, in the morning.
And that, that's a morning shot, obviously.
But that's the only east-facing sign we have.
Right. So if that, you're saying, would be right there on that north face, over that one bit, no, right here.
Turn it around the corner and it's facing north.
No, you're right here.
Yeah.
Right there. You just stick it on there as opposed to-
Turn it around the corner, yeah.
Right, put it around the corner.
It's taller than the building next to it anyway. It's taller than the building next to it anyway.
I also am very strongly in favor of making sure that, especially the tenant signs are, will be adjustable in their light intensity because of the different colors. It can tend to look like a real carnival ride. And, you know, if you have one red sign, it reads really bright, and then a blue is an entirely different thing. And it needs to have a cohesive feeling through the whole development. I really, I like all of the developments, wayfinding signs and the parking signs, et cetera, that seems to make sense. I agree they are a little tall, although when I'm driving around there, it's, I do, it's hard to find my way around. It's such a little bunch of maze, I feel like a sort of maze, rat in a maze thing, and parking is challenging to find. So I could, I could say it'd be nice if they were a little shorter, at the same time I kind of get why they're large. And it's, I'm a little more concerned about all the tenant signs hanging together. I agree with Art that I think it's a little bit tail wagging the dog about that option one, which is, obviously is a lot clunkier. That's just my opinion. And other than that, I think it'll be nice to have an updated look.
So, in effort to gain more consensus, I'm okay with the signs as they are on the tops of the building and the locations that they're at. I totally agree with the dimmable signs, anything that has lights should be-
Do you think they should be coordinated between buildings so that one is in blue and one is in green and one is in red? So there's some commonality of them?
I don't necessarily feel that they have to, they have to be the same color on the tops of the building. And I'm okay with the locations on the tops of the building. I do think they all need to be dimmable. I'm okay with the two options for the tenant signs, because I think that, I think they're both consistent enough with each other that they work together well. And then the other, to Gail's point, yeah, I'm sensitive to the height of those being, and they are literally right next to the sidewalk. But I guess I look at it as there's the new sign that went up in front of what used to be the Siebel Building. And walking past that, I don't feel, I guess I don't feel-
That address sign in front of the building?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a huge improvement, you know, for identification and for wayfinding. And when I walk past that thing, I don't feel intimidated by it. I think I'd feel similar with the other signs. I think I would go for more of the wayfinding aspect of them. So I'm not bothered by them as a pedestrian, so I would be fine with them as they are.
I agree with that. And because it's steel and because we're looking at really going, using the existing base and then going, going higher than that, and I look at it as sort of another monument like sign, and everything's kind of big around there, and it, it will look, it will look nice. That's my opinion too.
When a tenant sign, when the building, when the tenant sign on the top of the buildings, do we get to approve those signs?
Not if they're consistent with this sign program. They, there will be, that's the point of having this sign program. If they're consistent, we will approve them at a staff level.
Is there any possibility of making all the signs on the top of the building the same?
That's what's my question.
And so you can have different company name, but the lettering and the coloring is the same. And I know the tenants don't like that, but it certainly would give more continuity to the appearance of the place as a whole, if that's possible. It may make no sense that-
I might agree with that on a building by building basis, but not for all three buildings. I think distinguishing the signs is sort of why you have signs. It looks different than the other guy's sign. Maybe going with prime colors and then saying, well, if they're going to go away from prime colors, they might have to come back to us.
Well, how, I think that, I would be in favor of a condition of approval that talked about bringing the signs back to us if there were something that, I think we need to narrow what the signs are on the building tops, since those are the most visible and they're the most visible from all over the Bay Area. And if we can, if we can come up with something that says if a tenant wants to propose something that is not in that particular style or in a range of colors, then that it should come back to us for review. But I'm not quite, I haven't quite put together what a range of colors would be or what, how, you have any suggestion, Charlie, on how you would distinguish between a major and a minor design review with a sign program?
Charlie, if I might, can I just ask Gail a question? So they have, obviously the size and the font is established.
I don't know, is the font established? Is that to be the same?
You need to come to the microphone, sir.
That's a good question, because it could be cursed.
Yeah, it could be anything.
Yeah, it would, it would depend upon each individual tenant.
So basically for the rooftop sign, all the, you're talking about is the size and the location, the size in relationship to the side of the building.
We're giving them a maximum square footage that they can put their signage in. As far as, you know, dictating to them what color or font it will be, I mean, if we have a tenant that comes in, you know, that's Starbucks or whoever, if it's a corporate client, you can't really-
I don't like them.
I mean, we can't dictate to them that, you know, oh yeah, we want you to rent out half this building, but your sign at the top of the building that we're going to give you has to not match your corporate logo or identity. I think that would be something that would have to be discussed with the tenant when they sign the tenant.
But right now on this plan, it is channel letters.
Right now it's-
So even if a Starbucks came in, they're not going to put their little queen in a circle there.
They could, yeah.
They could, they might-
Well, this is just saying, there's nothing that, like your tenant signs, the ones down at the ground floor, there's a logo spot.
Right.
There's no logo spot in these. Charlie, could you comment on that?
Well, I-
Just saying, this is us approving channel letters.
No, it's a box that they can do anything they want in.
I read this as-
Pan channel letter forms. That's what we're approving. It doesn't say anything, but go ahead, Charlie.
Well, it's a little ambiguous. I mean, there is a note that says artwork provided by tenant. But I read this as maximum size, height and width, a location on the building, and individual letters. And within those parameters of, you know, whatever this color and font and style of sign that the tenant wants is, would be-
In your opinion, would that preclude a logo?
I, well, I think it just says letters.
So it's individual letters on the building, not, not a box with the build, with the letters sort of pasted onto a light box?
That's, that's what I see here.
That's what I see.
I see individual letters. It says mount letter forms flush to building parapet as shown on context elevations. So I see this as individual letters mounted to the parapet. I don't see logos.
Going back to the applicant or the designer, it's your thought that this area could be anything in the way of logos or whatever, as long as they're within those parameters and square footage.
Correct.
Wouldn't even necessarily have to read something, right?
It could be a rectangle, basically.
We're recommending to the tenant that this is what we think looks good on the building. But part of the signature with the tenant could be that they want to put their logo up there.
One way to address this would be to say that the master sign program allows individual letters at these locations within these size restrictions, and if they want to do something different, it needs to come back to the commission.
That makes sense.
Say that again, please?
That this master sign program allows individual letters in the locations and sizes indicated, but if they want to do something different, like a logo, then that sign would have to come back to the commission.
Okay, that helps.
That makes sense.
I would, I would add something on the color too. I mean, you have a whole system of signs that are working for the building with the white, black, gray thing. If they wanted to do something in a different color, I would like to see that come back.
Other than white.
Yeah.
How would you specify the color that's automatically permitted? White?
It's the same as the rest of the building, the dark in the day and the light, grayish white at night.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Could, I forget it. I was going to say maybe that could be somewhat stunted at staff level, but we would probably want to comment on that.
That's a tough one, because colors, I mean, there's an infinite number of colors, and I suppose we could specify them within hues and tints and brightnesses and stuff, but I'm not an expert in color theory, so I don't know how to, how to characterize what we could approve at a staff level and what would have to be, come back to the commission.
I just thought prime colors and, you know, if, if somebody came and said, I want a red sign here and a green sign here.
Right.
I don't think that, I mean, we could regulate it as, yes, this, if it's a color, it has to come back to us. It's just hard to imagine, for instance, Starbucks not wanting to have their logo and-
Their green and their logo.
Yeah, or-
But you know what? In that case, we want them to come here, because if we're, if we're going to get a big tenant like that coming here, we want them to come up to the commission. And will they want to put their logo up on a building? We would want to approve that here, this body.
And if the planning director is interpreting this as applying just to letters rather than letters and logos, then they would have to come back for a logo.
Well, I think I would prefer, rather than leave it to my interpretation, because you might have a different planning director in the future who has a different interpretation, that you make that explicit in the conditions of approval, that this, this, this approval, this master sign program for the tops of the towers applies to letters only, signs with logos or anything else has to come back to the commission.
With white LED.
Well, you can't, this drawing does say colors, face colors to be determined, be determined by individual tenant branding guidelines. If you're not willing to accept that, we could limit it to white letters only. And then if it's different, then it would have to come back.
I really don't feel comfortable giving them carte blanche on colors. They might come up with chartreuse or something like that.
Well, I would be happier if they had a, just one typeface that was allowable.
That's hard too, because everyone has their branding.
Yeah, I would disagree with that.
I would like to say for sure that, that the lumens, the lumen output is, is able to be, to be variable, is variable and at, at any complaint, we'll need to, and preferably cohesive throughout the three towers so that one doesn't shine brightly.
I'm not sure how to- Does anyone, okay, color. Should we have a motion on this so that we can move it? It seems that there's generally consensus that we want dim-
I had a couple of other comments.
Okay, more comments.
I, I still feel that the garage sign should be changed from the name of the building to public parking. I think it makes much more sense. It'll, it's more informative. And what you have now is you're only duplicating what's already out at the street. And my other feeling is, I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, I think we should limit the tenant sign to option two. I don't like the mix of the two, two different signs.
Okay, let's, let's take a little straw poll here and see, on the question of whether there should be one or two options allowed? Who thinks there should be only one option?
I'm the only one.
Okay, so that one, okay, we see where we're at on that. On building two, whether the sign should be on the, or building, tower three, whether it needs to be on the north side rather than the east side? Who feels that?
Well, I was the north side.
Okay, so we've got, I think that we have a consensus that there needs to be a dimmable, it needs to be dimmable capacity. How about design approval if it's something other than letters in white LED?
Absolutely.
Okay, does anyone move, make a motion formally?
Well, can I, can I direct Art to a question about the parking?
Oh, the parking garage, yes.
What if, well, first of all, this is a public parking place. This is a public parking garage. People pull in and they pay and they pull out any time of the day?
Well, yeah, it's privately owned, but anybody can park there. So, yeah, I guess it's public.
It's privately owned, so they can kind of say what they want there, because it's not run by the city. But I agree, maybe, would you think that between exit and enter, instead of the logo P that established at parking just says parking or some other sign that helped you? I can understand putting the Towers of Emeryville, that's the parking for the Towers of Emeryville. There's no question. I wouldn't want to take it down.
The P in a circle is sort of one of those universal signs that go there, park.
Great, maybe you could take a straw vote on it.
I agree with that. And also, I think, you know, right now it is kind of ambiguous of what's going on at that entrance.
Oh, there's nothing there. It's not ambiguous.
But I think this, the signage that they're proposing is really obvious and it's like, it's, to me, it's pretty clear that this is a parking garage.
I agree.
Okay, sounds like there's general agreement on the parking garage. Somebody want to make a formal?
I will move with those changes.
Can I clarify one point?
Right ahead.
On the dimmable-ness of these signs, I heard that they need to be dimmable, which I believe the applicant said they are, but we'll put a condition in that explicitly says that. And they're to be dimmed if we receive complaints, and they are to be all dimmed equally to the same brightness?
I would just go for a condition that says they have to be dimmable.
Yeah.
Yeah, there might be only one that's affecting your building again.
Okay, well, there's only, right, there's only one that faces east.
Right.
All the rest face north or south. So just say the lights shall be dimmable and shall be dimmed if complaints are received or something like that.
I would just say the lights will be dimmable.
Okay, fine. Lights will be dimmable. That will be what the condition will say.
Dimmed if appropriate.
Do you have all those changes, Charlie?
I believe so.
So it's the dimmable ballast, it's the design approval, if any color comes back.
Correct. So what's approved for the tower top signs are individual white letters.
Right.
Anything else, logo or colors, has to come back to the commission for individual approval. Right?
Is that a master, would that be a major sign permit?
Well, yeah.
They come back?
Anything that comes to the commission by definition is a major sign permit. It'll be basically minor process under a master sign program if it complies with the program, which specifies individual white letters. If it doesn't comply with that, then it has to come back to the commission as a major sign permit.
Okay, was there a motion made on that?
I made that motion.
Commissioner Flores, Vice Chair Flores made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Okay, on the motion with those conditions, Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Flores?
Aye.
Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Okay, our next public hearing item is 5701 Hollis Street, modifications to a permit that we approved. We're going to take a five minute break.
Oh, good.
Rearrangement of things to get tenants in. We've reviewed the, and the property owners rep have reviewed the revised conditions of approval and are very amenable to working with the park designers, in fact, look forward to it. The gap between the buildings is 11 feet. And just one minor factual thing, we had hoped to have the green screen on the south side of the passage only. The north side of the passage is a brick building that we have a planter at the bottom, but it's a nice brick wall, so we can prefer to have that flexibility to not have it on that side, and that's all I have to say. I'll be glad to answer questions.
There any questions?
I have a question. The planters on the south, south side, so north facing planters, are they, they're going to be draining down into the ground? They're not just going to be slapped on concrete, correct?
No, there will be drainage, the planters themselves are raised to get enough soil in there to get plants that are healthy and will actually go on the green screens. They'll be drained, and that whole area is going to have quite a bit of work, so they'll go to a pipe and that'll go tie into the storm drain.
Maybe I didn't make myself clear. So the roots can go down, all the way down, down, down to the ground, as opposed to just drainage of the water.
That's correct. But the reason they're raised is because the landscape architect thinks that their footing's down there and there isn't going to be much good ground for the roots to get to. So we're trying to get as much soil as possible.
Yes, and there's pretty good grade, it's a pretty steep grade there from the, where the, the doors will be coming out to where the grade is at this point.
There will be no doors coming out from the south building into the garden. So the garden is developed as an amenity for the north building, which will have doors into it.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing if there's anyone wishing to speak on this item. It doesn't look like it, so I'll close the public hearing. Back to the commission, any comments?
I'm of approval.
I'll second that.
No more comments? Okay. I just, my, I do have one small comment on the gate that you're putting on either side of the passageway. It's being shown with a big solid kick plate and thing. If that solid part could be reduced as much as possible, that'd be great, just for the transparency, because the transparency is really nice, but I would go ahead and call the question.
And this is with the modified condition that staff is recommending, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Flores?
Aye.
Chair Donaldson?
Aye.
Six ayes, the application is approved. This decision may be appealed to the city council within 15 days.
Thank you. Okay, our next public hearing, AT&amp;T Black Dot Wireless Appeal.
Please excuse me, I'm just going to go in and grab the most recent version of my PowerPoint. Okay, so I am presenting an initial minor design review application that staff has denied, and that was appealed to you for a decision. The applicant is AT&amp;T. The project site is the water tower building. It's located on Powell Street between Bowdrie and Doyle. The whole site is shown outlined in red adjacent to Stanford Park, and the water tower itself is the filled-in red block here. Again, darkened here, but these are photos of the site. Here's the water tower looking south with Powell Street here. This is from the corner. This shows the water tower legs and the site in question. And then this is a picture from Bowdrie with Powell on the left.
Doyle.
Excuse me, Doyle, thank you, looking at the water tower and the deck below it. Here are some site plans, again showing the property as a whole with a blown-up view of the water tower. The proposed shelter, excuse me, let me just take a moment to make a clarification. In my staff report, I used the word cabinet to refer to the entire enclosure of what's proposed. I noticed that the applicant used the word shelter because they referred to what the shelter contained as cabinets. So I've tried to make that switch. I will use the word shelter here to mean the entire enclosure. So, here is the large shelter, and this replaces a section of the footprint of the deck. So this small section here of the deck would be removed and the shelter would sit on the ground where that deck section was. And over here is a smaller area, it's actually not sheltered, these are two AC units that would simply sit on a small pad. And I want to clarify also the fencing around the perimeter. This green line here represents the wooden, kind of non-seethrough fencing, and then starting here and going out and around the corner in the blue is the transparent wrought iron fencing. Here are the elevations provided by the applicant. You can see the entire water tower. There's the two fencing types along, and then shown in dark for beyond is the cabinet, or excuse me, shelter. And here in the corner is the two AC units. And this is the south view, I guess from within the parking lot of the, the property. This is a blow-up of that north view from Powell. You can see very lightly stenciled in the fencing, the change in fence would actually be here at the edge of these two AC units, which would sit out, and then the shelter itself beyond the wrought iron fence here. The top of the shelter, or excuse me, the height of the shelter with the additional trellis on top would be 11 feet three inches.
11 feet?
11 feet three inches.
What's the height of the fence?
I don't know the exact height. I believe it's about six or seven feet.
And does, how far above the structure is the trellis?
The trellis itself is about, I believe about a foot. I think the structure, the shelter itself is 10 feet three inches, and then there's an additional foot in height added by the trellis.
I'm a little confused where the AC units are. You said that's, that's the sort of solid type fencing?
The solid type fence goes up to about this line, and then, let me actually just go-
That's not what I saw when I went today. According to the A2, which is the plot plan, it, the fencing, solid fencing ends in a straight line, and then the wrought iron fencing goes, continues north and then west, so...
Yes, I would agree with that.
Okay.
So, looking here at the site plan, here is the wooden fencing, it stops here, and then the wrought iron continues around. So going forward to the-
So that picture-
So this is incorrect.
That's what I-
Yes, so the wooden fencing here actually ends at this point, not over here as the striagram shows. So the wooden fencing would end here, the wrought iron fencing would then come towards the viewer north a little bit, and then wrap around, I believe my mouth just gave out, wrap around those two short AC units and continue.
So the AC units would be visible through the-
It would be visible through the transparent wrought iron fencing, yes.
And in fact, on that last picture, once again, the AC units, according to the A2, if we're having a straight-on view here, actually we would not see the base of the tower, they would be right in front of it. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Well, that's what AT shows us, is that they sit right in that corner of the projecting wrought iron fence. These are renderings provided by the applicant. They show the deck with the section cut out and the new shelter provided. I would hazard to guess that this person that's meant to add scale would be very tall. I don't know the exact height of the deck, but even should it be four feet above the ground, which I believe is generous, this person would be seven feet tall.
So he's standing on the deck?
He's standing on the deck, next to the cabinet. This is the landscape plan that was approved in the past in a design review application for the water tower building. A few years ago, they applied for a design review permit to rehab the building and the surrounding landscaping. It was approved, this is the approved landscape plan, and I have a zoom in of the water tower area. I know the font is a little hard to read here, but that's the landscape list. The important thing to call out here is looking especially at the top of the landscape plan facing Powell, you can see there's some striping that represents a jasmine, star jasmine ground cover that is there. All of the landscaping shown along the street is there. There's a small tree, two shrubs that grow right up against the landscaping plan, or excuse me, the wrought iron fence. Of note, however, is that directly behind that street-side landscaping is a blank piece on this plan before you get to the deck, and there's no landscaping shown there. So I just wanted to call that out. The deck itself starts where you can see the kind of trapezoidal screen, sunscreens proposed for the deck. Those do not, are not currently installed and would have to be kind of reconfigured should they be installed with the shelter in place as well.
But there is landscaping.
There is landscaping where this blank is currently.
That's where the grevillea hedge is.
Exactly, yes. So this plan shows no landscaping between the fence and the deck. There is, there are a few shrubs planted there, they're approximately two or three feet high, so I'll get to that again, but I just kind of wanted to discuss the landscape plan.
Arlie, can you go back to the previous drawing for a second?
Yes.
I just want to point out to the commission, if you look at the lower right corner of this drawing, is the area to the southeast of the building. This is where the equipment cabinets are for all of the other cellphone antennas that are on this tower. There are a lot of them, and we should also note that this application does include some additional antennas on the tower, which are not at issue here. Staff is fine with additional antennas on the tower, it's really the equipment cabinet that's the issue. Every previous application for minor design review for antennas on this tower, of which there have been several-
Four, actually.
Have been required to place their cabinets out of view behind the building, which they have done, and they've then trenched their conduits, their wires from that, those cabinets over to the tower. AT&amp;T claims there's no more space for that, which is why they're asking for this tower. But our position is that they shouldn't be treated any differently than any other cellphone antenna applicant in the past that have always been required to hide their equipment cabinets. So I just want to point out, that's where they are.
So the other, the existing tenant, I mean, the existing transmitter is not AT&amp;T, it's a different company?
I'm not sure how many are up currently. We have received four other applications, four antennae at this site. I believe there's at least three already on the water tower. And as Charlie said, all of the equipment cabinets that go with those antennas are to the south of the building, behind a wall, completely shielded from the park and not visible to the public.
But none of those previous ones were AT&amp;T?
No, that's correct. AT&amp;T does not have any antenna on the water tower already.
Oh, I see, so there's many different-
Oh, AT&amp;T's a new applicant?
It is a new antenna applicant. We do receive occasional applications, I believe we have one now, to replace antennae, and in that case, there's generally no change to the equipment cabinets that go with it. So we're fine approving those, and as Charlie said, it's not the antennae that we are objecting to, it's the size and location of the shelter. So just to give a brief history of this application, the applicant submitted on March 31st, staff reviewed the applicant, application and found issue with the location of the shelter and size. Staff and the applicant worked together to try to find alternate locations. I believe the applicant looked at putting the shelter on the roof. The engineering of the building did not support the weight of the shelter. It was also considered putting the shelter underground, however, apparently both the other antenna and wireless applicants, their conduits underground as well as other electrical wirings make that a very complicated and messy, if not impossible, option. And so the applicant reiterated their choice of the position of the shelter against Powell Street below the water tower. Staff issued a denial of this application on June 3rd, and on June 6th, the applicant filed an appeal to have the case brought to you and considered. The applicant, excuse me, the applicant's appeal letter had 10 points of rebuttal. I believe the letter is on the dais before you, and you received an email with it as well. And I'm just going to go through those 10 points and address them point by point.
Do you have a plan showing how the cabinet will look on their proposal?
We did not receive a zoomed-in elevation or a plan-
How a plan?
A plan? I can, I believe one of, this, this is the best plan, I can, I can open my PowerPoint and remove the red box that shows the lines of the proposed trellis on top.
Is that red box where the-
Is the size of the shelter that's proposed.
That's where the shelter would be?
Yes, exactly.
The shelter is 22 feet long, six feet deep, and about 10 feet tall.
How far back from the fence is it, is what I'm interested in?
I do not have an exact measurement. I've balling it, when I was out there, it looks like four or five feet, maybe a little more.
Back from the fence?
Back from the fence. And the fence is also set back a few feet from the sidewalk itself. Any other questions? Okay, so I'm going to go through the 10 points of the applicant's appeal letter. I've summarized the applicant's points, and I invite them, if they feel that I've misstated anything, invite them to bring it up.
One more thing on the, it's, it's not listed anywhere, but I believe it was in your staff report, on the plan, the height of the structure.
The shelter.
Shelter, sorry.
The shelter itself is 10 feet three inches tall, and the trellis that they show on top of it is an additional foot, so the total height from the ground is 11 feet three inches.
What is the trellis for?
I believe the trellis was meant to support landscaping. No plantings are shown on the plans that they submitted that would act as a vine cover for that, but in the renderings, they show what looks like wisteria across the trellis.
Oh, I see, they have planting, in this picture, they have planting on top of the enclosure.
They, they show the renderings with plantings, but none, none of the plans that they submitted actually show new plants put in the ground, proposed. So the first point of the appeal letter is that before this past design review applicant, application came through and the building was refurbished, the fence around the entire site was, I believe, a chain link but covered with vines and therefore served as a solid fence, and the city never required its removal during that time. Therefore, the city shouldn't require a transparent fence to remain transparent now. The city implements new zoning regulations and discretionary design review when new development applications are submitted, not during existing uses and designs. We, we use new applications to enforce the zoning code. When a design review application to improve the property came to the city, the design, and this is the past design review application, the design was approved containing a visually transparent fence, which is the wrought iron fence, around the base of the water tower, and the city would like to maintain that transparent fence now.
Was that approval at staff level?
Yes, it was an administrative design review permit.
Within the last five years?
Yes.
Okay.
2008. Yeah, was, if you remember when the water tower was repainted, it was part of that application.
Point two is that the existing landscape plan contains vegetation that would screen the shelter, and also a point of clarification that the shelter sits on the ground, not on the deck. You may have noticed that the staff denial letter states that the shelter is on the deck. That was a confusion due to the renderings, my mistake. We acknowledge that this shelter sits on the ground. And as far as the existing landscaping, it would not screen the shelter. The existing ivy and star jasmine are trimmed as ground cover and sit in front of the fence. Also in front of the fence is a small tree, and that's right in front of the, the proposed shelter. There's also two shrubs on either side of that tree along the fence. Behind the fence currently are some shrubs trimmed to about two or three feet. On the landscape plan, there are no, no plants at all shown that would provide any screening. And again, the, the height of the shelter, we went over that. Point three says that the existing landscape plan shows bamboo, which would block the site's sound and wind, and therefore the shelter would provide the same effect. Again, there is bamboo on the landscape plan, it is not in this location, it's further along towards the more heavily landscaped area. And no, no plants exist now or are shown on the plans that would provide the height necessary to screen the shelter. Point four is that the existing landscaping behind the deck, known as grevillea noeli, that's my best guess, there's no common name, would grow taller than the shelter if less untrimmed. Staff took the time to look at a few gardening websites, we also have a reference gardening book, and generally it's agreed that this species would not grow taller than four to six feet, which would obviously not shield an 11-foot-tall shelter. As you see on your appeal letter, point five reiterates a lot of the material in points one through four, so staff will reference those answers. Point six is that adjacent properties have fences with structures directly behind them without screening, and that this proposed shelter is architecturally designed to match the existing building. Staff looked around, and the only obvious example of this fence with buildings behind it is that just east of this property is Boyd's Auto Repair. It has two separate buildings and numerous cars awaiting repair behind a wrought iron fence. However, the buildings are buildings, they have windows and doors on all walls, they are set further back from the fence, or the building itself is on the property line facing onto the sidewalk. This, that exact property was granted a use permit in 1999 and has not applied for design review then or since. If staff received an application, we would look at it with the same detail, level of detail as this application. As far as an architect's design, staff did not see any architect's stamp or signature on the plans submitted, and no shelter materials or colors were listed on the plans, other than a note that it would match the building. Point seven is that no ordinance prohibits construction of the proposed shelter. This is true, there is no ordinance that prohibits this shelter outright, that's why we accepted the application in. However, design review can only be approved if six findings can be made, which I'll discuss below, or excuse me, later, and as well as the project being in conformance with the citywide design guidelines. Neither of these requirements are met in this case, which is why we've denied the application. Point eight, the closest properties across Powell Street have buildings immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. This is true. The code does allow lack of setbacks in any zone that's not residential. Buildings are permitted adjacent to property lines, and in fact are encouraged along sidewalks when the design includes windows, doors, and other architectural features, as they do enliven the pedestrian experience along the street frontage. Point nine is that the building across from, across from the site on Doyle Street sits immediately adjacent to the sidewalk, and therefore staff is discriminating against this applicant to not allow the proposed shelter. The brick building does sit right on the, the property line at the sidewalk, however, the building is made of desirable materials such as brick and painted wood. It has windows and doors, trim, and other architectural features that engage the eye and improve the aesthetic environment. A large utilitarian structure of 22 feet by 11 feet three inches by six feet with no engaging features, sitting behind a fence is not the same thing. The proposed structure must meet the findings and conform with the design guidelines, just like any other proposed project. And finally, point 10, the landowner approves of the proposed shelter location, and the deck will be more enjoyable for the property owners with the shelter present. The city has not forbidden any structure or planting specifically that would effectively block the sound and visibility from the street. The property owner is within his or her rights to apply for a design review permit to construct such a barrier, and if such an application were received, it would be subject to the same required findings as all design review permits. I'll now go through the findings required for a design review permit. There are six findings that you're more familiar with that we use in the resolution. There's an additional finding here that goes with any design review permit. I'm just going to read this. Required findings: All development proposals, including signs, which are subject to design review, shall be evaluated for compliance with adopted guidelines. Design review approval may be granted only if a proposal conforms to all the guidelines set forth below and to any other design review requirements. And we've added here, for example, the adopted citywide design guidelines. Here is the only design guideline that we found that applies to this situation. It's under the site planning section. Guideline C6 says that projects should conceal all mechanical, electrical, and other building equipment from the public right-of-way and from other existing buildings where feasible. Use screening materials and other buffers to minimize noise and visual impacts. Mechanical equipment should not be located along the ground-floor street frontage. This guideline is clearly not met by the proposal. The equipment shelter is located adjacent to the street frontage and is poorly screened from view. Even covered with vines, it will still present an imposing presence as opposed to a clear view across the property. Although the applicant reports that it is infeasible to locate the shelter elsewhere on the property, the project is not vital to the property, but rather an additional use. And now I'll go through the six findings that you're more familiar with. The site subject to design review shall be graded developed with due regard to the natural terrain, aesthetic quality, and landscaping, so as not to impair the environmental quality, value, or stability of the site, or, or the environmental quality or value of improved or unimproved property in the area. No new grading would take place, a section of the existing wooden deck would be removed, and the shelter would be installed at grade level with the area of deck, within the area of deck removed. Some screening vine cover is shown in the renderings, but no new plantings are shown on the plans. The proposed equipment shelter and air conditioning units adjacent to the public sidewalk would impair the environmental quality of the site and the property in the area. A building structure assigned shall relate congruously to its site and property in the immediate and adjacent areas, not be of such poor quality of design as to, as to adversely affect the environmental quality or desirability of the immediate areas or neighboring areas, not impede the benefits of occupancy of existing property or environmental quality thereof in such areas, or the stability and value of improved, of improved or unimproved real property in such areas with attendant deterioration of conditions affecting the health, safety, and general welfare of the community. This proposed shelter and air conditioning units do not relate to the site and surrounding property. The design is of poor quality and has a negative effect on the desirability of the area. At this point, I'm realizing that you're probably familiar with the conditions themselves, so I'm going to skip to the finding that I've written below it that's not italicized. This finding is that the project will not have a harmonious relationship with the surrounding development, in that it effectively inserts a solid wall in the form of the shelter between the property and the street. All other buildings along Powell Street face the street and have windows and doors opening onto the sidewalk. Instead of creating a welcoming environment for pedestrians and adjacent landowners, the large shelter blocks interaction and openness. It is detrimental to the pedestrian experience on Powell Street adjacent to the property. Before, the proposed large, large shelter is not designed with open space and pedestrian use in mind. In effectively walling off the deck from the street, it presents a physical barrier between the property users and people in the public right-of-way. B5, the proposed equipment shelter is poorly designed and located and will detract from the quality of the site. Although it will be painted to match the main structure, it will not be concealed from view. The current landscaping in front of the shelter is below the level of the deck and of a species unlikely to grow to the 10-foot-plus height of the cabinet. Although, excuse me, shelter. Although renderings of the shelter show some vine covering, no additional landscaping has, no additional landscape plan showing these or other plantings have been submitted. Even with vegetative screening, the shelter would remain a barrier between the property and surrounding land and pedestrians. And lastly, the location, design, landscaping, and height of the proposed shelter and air conditioning units are inappropriate for the site. No shelter of this size can be appropriately located in this portion of the site. With that, I present three basic options for the planning commission to consider. The first is to approve the project, either as submitted or with the condition that additional landscaping be added to screen the shelter properly. The second is to approve the project but require a new location for the cabinet, if possible. Two possible suggestions are that it be undergrounded elsewhere, perhaps below the water tower, if there's space there, or inside the building. I'm not aware of how feasible either of these are, they're just suggestions. And third is to deny the appeal and the project. Staff recommends that the commission deny the appeal of the design review permit. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Arlie, have, do you have any idea whether people use the deck?
My understanding from the owner and the applicant is that they do not use the deck, partly because it is loud due to the Powell Street noise.
Did the staff approve the prior equipment that was put behind the building?
Yes, each of the, the previous antennae or wireless installations have been administrative design review permits, and have shown both the antennae on the water tower as well as the shelter. the shelter, all of which have been placed to the rear or south of the building thus far.
Is one of the staff's objection that the shelter prevents public view of the site, it blocks the view, and makes it uncomfortable for people walking along the street?
It's less the fact of blocking the view and more the nature in which it's blocked.
What does that mean?
Well, I think it is the property's owner's right to at least propose in a design review application some kind of block between the, the street and the private property. However, an 11-foot-tall shelter like this, even covered with greenery, I think would feel quite a bit looming over the pedestrian and not be extremely pleasant to look at.
The shelter is what, two feet higher than the fence?
Again, I don't know the exact measurement of the fence, I would estimate that it's three or four feet higher.
If we compare this to Pixar, who put up a fence and completely blocks anybody's view by growing trees, rosebushes on it, if we, if we asked them to do the same thing, you would have almost an identical situation that we permitted in Pixar. So why, why can't we, why would that not be permitted here?
Well, it's taller for one thing, Art.
Pardon?
It's taller. Pixar doesn't have boxes standing above the height of the fence.
Two foot, does it? But aren't they going to put planting on, 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 on the top of the thing so that that two feet will be covered with landscaping?
They've shown renderings with plantings on them, however, none of their submitted plans actually show any plantings going in.
But does it mean, okay.
Any other questions?
Chair Donaldson?
Yes.
I just want to remind the commission of something. You have not had an appeal of a staff decision for quite a while, and I just want to note for the commission's benefit that this is governed by Section 9-4.88.3 of the municipal code, and one of the stipulations of that section is that the decision of the planning commission is final and may not be appealed to the city council.
May not be appealed.
May not be appealed to the city council. So whatever you decide tonight is the final decision.
Do the applicants wish to make a presentation?
I believe they do.
Okay.
Dave is, okay, Dave. Dave Christensen is here from AT&amp;T.
You'll have to hike the microphone up so that we can hear you.
Yes. There we go. Well, good evening, Madam Commissioner, and congratulations for your new appointment, and fellow commissioners. I'd like to thank you for taking time to hear our appeal of the decision. I'd like to thank the staff for all your hard work and back and forth as we've been going through this project. I appreciate that. My name is Dave Christensen, and I'm acting agent on behalf of AT&amp;T Mobility. My place of business is 3771 Copper Penny Lane in Auburn, California. At first, I'd like to acknowledge that, well, yes, staff has worked quite hard, and I appreciate that. However, we do not agree with much of the conclusions that have drawn in with their decision. I'll just start out by, from the beginning, we came to this project and we followed the city ordinances for wanting us to co-locate on existing towers or existing locations. So we, we approached, approached the city and we, we came here where there are multiple carriers, eight, there's four carriers on the site right now. AT&amp;T is not one of them, and we've had difficulty with coverage in that area. In fact, the people in the law office there have changed to Verizon because they couldn't get good enough coverage. But that's neither here nor there. As with co-locations, the, especially in beautiful urban areas like Powell Street at that location, visual aesthetics are vital. I noticed that there's no objection to the antennae that are on the tower and that the objections are strictly to the cabinet and the location of the cabinet and the obscuring of the cabinet. Now, we did, we did exhaust our options for where our cabinets could go. We initially wanted to go behind the southeast side of the building where the other carriers have their equipment, but our equipment is, is more substantial and we could not find a large enough area inside that enclosure to put our cabinets. We then went to look at the roof, and their landlord's engineer said it's not going to support the 10,000-plus pounds of weight that our equipment would have. We also looked to try to take parking spaces out and, and use one and a half parking spaces. And the, the city has said that there's already the, the bare minimum number of parking spaces for that size, so we couldn't go there. We considered an underground vault, and we, we couldn't reach that for a number of reasons. There's, for one thing, your, your city plan says that the water table there is, is just feet below the surface, but also there's a significant number of, of cables and conduits from the tower itself going across the parking lot and so forth. The last option that we could find in discussing this with the landlord was going under the tower itself. And the landlord himself was the one, well, Stephen Kak, yeah, Stephen, he was the one who suggested putting it there alongside Powell. We've made every effort to try to make this cabinet architecturally matching of the building with the design of it. We've tried to incorporate the trellis work on the top to match the walkway leading to the front door. That's why the trellis itself takes up a foot, because it matches the existing trellis there. I am mistaken, I incorrectly told you that the shelter is 10-foot-three plus a foot, making 11-foot-three. I'm told tonight that it is 9-foot-six with a 1-foot trellis making it 10-foot-six, so we lose nine inches, we lose nine inches, but it's still a substantial height. We know that, that the green design is important, a green screen. We did not propose in our, in our zoning drawings, any landscape. We didn't think at the time that it was necessary when we made the proposal, but we had since, sent in photo simulations of wisteria on top of the, on top of the cabinet, which would, wisteria as it usually grows, covers the top halves of whatever it grows on. It would, it would grow on the trellis, it would hang down, covering the top half. If I could, let's see, if I could hand out something.
Could you get the overhead ready too? Or Charlie?
Okay. Yeah, you can have, I've made enough for, for everyone. We knew that the proximity to the street was going to be challenged, that it was going to be the, the sticking point, and so we, we did read the ordinances and as, as Arlie has clearly shown today in her six, six points, there are six points in your ordinances that talk about directly affecting our proposal. If you want to. There you go. And as I, as I read those, those six points, I noticed that they were all discretionary in nature and that they were, they came to ideas of environmental quality and value and stability and harmonious relationships with the area, ideas like avoiding the deterioration of the conditions affecting the health, the safety, and the public welfare, general welfare. I, I noticed, as has been expressed, that the ordinances do not specific prohibit our enclosure. And then I read the, the guidelines for the city, and I, that's what I gave a copy of you here. And I noticed in the introduction of your guidelines that they are, well, and the purpose of them is to give recommendation, and that it also says that they're supposed to be flexible enough to allow for creativity, and creativity and innovation in design. And so the, the one point that really said here is in our Emeryville city design that mechanical buildings, mechanical and electrical buildings should not be on street level or ground level, street adjacent, is, it's a recommendation that, according to your introduction, should have some, some flexibility. And we, we too went around and looked around the area. I have some more, excuse me, I have some more photos that I would just like to submit. Some of these are showing structures behind the fence. First one, if I could have one copy. Thank you. I'll wait a moment until you get these. We two drove around and we, the first, the first page here shows a rendering of, well, not a rendering, a photo of one of the cabinets at Pixar, standing about 12 feet high, right behind a fence that's not screened. As you, as you scroll through these, the last page happened, or the second to the last page happens to be a, a building with windows. Initially, when our, when our application was denied, it said nothing of mechanical or electrical issues, it just simply said the structure is too close to the street. And so that's where one of the photos is just a, it's one of your buildings. But you can clearly see from some of these that you have examples in your city that, that would, you can see what they are. The landlord has desired to have a barrier between his deck and the street. He actually does use the deck at times, that's why there's a table and chairs there, but he has told us that his, his personnel in, in the law offices there, they don't like going on the deck because it's just too loud. The street is so close, and, and he feels as if here he has built a nice deck and he can't use it. And so he, he thought of wanting to, to landscape it, and he thought of it way back in 2008. And I've made photocopies here of the, that the landlord provided to me, I'll pass out. The front page is just the title page. It's the second page that I want to refer you to. It's the landscape page, and I've, I've highlighted on that where clumping, or clumping bamboo has been approved by your city to completely surround the base of that tower as it abuts to both Doyle Street and Powell Street. And the landlord has informed us that he's always had the right to put bamboo there, he just hasn't done so yet. And he thought, well, why not now? And so he, he, he claims that we can do this. Now, the landlord would prefer to have the gravelia grow up. He's of the opinion, although I understand tonight that perhaps it can't go more than six feet, he thought it could, but nonetheless, the landlord is willing to plant bamboo to, to completely shield this cabinet enclosure if, if that's what the, the commission here We believe that had the, had the landlord planted this bamboo and already been existing, that this would be a non-issue, that the, the equipment enclosure would be hidden from view, and it wouldn't be known that it was there. Currently, there is bamboo in the property. It stands up about 13 feet high. It's clumping bamboo. It's in various spots along the inside of his fence, but it is about 13 feet high. I didn't measure it, but that's about it. We believe that our application should be approved, and so the landlord is also understanding, and we, we hold the understanding, maybe it's not correct, but that the public doesn't need to see across someone's property. Along Powell Street, three-quarters of his property line is a solid wood fence. It's only at the water tower where the wrought iron starts. And the landlords are of the opinion, as are we, that it's his right to let people see his, his property or not. Some people have fences, some people don't. So in conclusion, we followed the, the city's guidelines to co-locate. We couldn't find a place to do it. There was no place large enough on the, on the property to allow a 22-foot-by-six-foot cabinet enclosure. We believe that the structure is aesthetically and architecturally pleasing, and we've tried to match it to the existing building paints, everything like that, including the trellis, which although it adds, adds height, you could see from the profile, from the site plan, that it's about the same height as the existing walkway. So it blends in with height. We believe that the ordinances don't prohibit us from being there and that the guidelines are flexible recommendations, according to the introduction. As we've shown you the pictures of Pixar and other places, there are examples of, of possibilities, variances or whatever, I don't know if variances were given for those or what, but there are examples of that. And so I respectfully request that Madam Commissioner and your, you fellow commissioners, consider our rebuttal to the recommendations of denial and that you approve our application. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Yeah, one of the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What is the material on the vertical walls of the shelter?
It is, yeah, it is to match the building itself, so that's a wooden, it's a wooden structure, so it's, it's made out of wood. Painted to the same color as the building.
And inside are the?
Inside are the cabinets.
The generators themselves?
Yes, there are eight or nine equipment cabinets that stand about 80 inches tall.
What is the sound generated by the equipment inside the cabinets?
Decibel level, very, very minor. I can't tell you the specific number. I'm sure I could get that if that was a, a real reason. I noticed that in your guidelines, your, the city of Powell, well, the city of, city, excuse me, Powell Street has a decibel level of 65 to 70 decibels along that corridor, and there's no way that, that this equipment would generate anywhere near 65 to 70 decibels.
So you mentioned that you explored the possibility of getting rid of a couple parking places, and that was denied?
Yeah, that was, we, that was denied. We wanted to, to use parking spaces, but we learned that there were exactly as many parking spaces as whatever your formula is for square footage of that property.
If, if we could give up some parking spaces, is that still an option?
I would have to ask the landlord to answer that specifically. So I can't, I can't give you a firm answer, but I would be happy to ask him. I wish he were here, he's, he's out of state. But if, also if that's a significant, if that's a question that, that a lot hinges on, I would love to come back, I would love to come back with him present and, and answer that, because he didn't, he didn't.
Question.
Yeah.
The, plans are very incomplete. They don't show any kind of architectural detailing at all on this structure, and it's just kind of casual views on a very small scale. And it's just kind of casual views on a very small scale. But you do in the antenna plan, sheet A4, show something called surge suppressor, which seems to be sticking out of the top. Is that correct?
The surge suppressor?
Uh, sheet A. Yet it doesn't show up in the elevations and it's another two feet high.
Yeah, the elevations are, again, when we, when we submitted them, we thought that it was gonna be a simple design review and there, there's zoning drawings, they're not construction drawings. And so they didn't include any landscape, um, details.
Buzz, are you worried that, that surge suppress?
Surge suppressor.
Surge suppressor. Is it low or high?
Well, it looks to me, it doesn't show at all on the elevation.
It's actually on the, it's on the elevation. It is to the far left on the north elevation, PDC six surge suppressor. It's right below the rail of the catwalk below the tower. I'll point it out.
It's up here?
Thank you.
Right, uh, here.
Oh, okay. So, I see. So it's not on the?
It's not on the ground.
Go ahead.
You said that you, it was not feasible to put the cabinet underground.
That's correct.
Is it possible to put it two or three feet below ground level so that the height of the cabinet is not higher than the fence? In other words, we go compromise. Can it be recessed below ground level to several feet?
That's a, a question, that's a good question. And our, our architect has, has put it on the top. Again, it's one of those questions that if it's, if it is significant in determining your, your, your vote, we would love to?
Significant to me, I don't know how the other commissioner?
Yeah, we would love to get our, our construction engineer to answer that.
I could, I could appreciate if the water table is six feet, that you don't want to put it below ground, but maybe you can compromise and put it partially below ground, which I think would solve, in my mind, a lot of the problems.
Art, this is, um?
We can, we can, we can agree to that. I was just informed.
You can agree to lower it?
We can agree to lower that.
You can agree to lower it?
I'm told that we can agree to lower that three feet.
Three feet?
Three feet. I'm sorry, I should be addressing, but I?
I think, okay, are there any other questions for the applicant at this point?
At this point?
You don't have any architectural drawings of this structure then? Is that correct?
Uh, of the structure itself, I have renderings by a photo simulation expert, but I don't have construction drawings, no.
I think what you?
And they never were submitted to the planning department?
The drawings you have are what we have.
Yes.
Okay, so there's no detail of?
No.
Vanessa? I do have one more question. If we were looking at A2, the overhead enlarged site plan, was any consideration given to the landscaped area adjacent to the ramp up to the water tower as a location?
There was consideration initially of that being the location for the vault.
The vault?
But it, it was, it was?
The cabinets?
Yeah, yes, the, by vault, I mean an underground shelter.
But not an above-ground shelter?
But not above-ground in that location.
And why is that?
The landlord did not want it there.
There's some reasonably decent landscaping there?
And, and in that area, I don't know if you've been on the property, there's a, there's a pond there, there's a tree there, there's, there's koi going on.
There's a, there's a large, uh, sort of shrub planting between lovely fountain and it is?
It's a really nice, it?
Well landscaped.
Yes.
There is, there's quite a swath of not so much going on there, so I'm surprised that that wasn't looked at.
Yeah, we walked the site with the engineers and with the landlord present so that we could get his ideas and, and that site was, was rejected by him.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Charlie, did you have something to say?
I had one more question. The AC units, could they be placed inside of a cabinet or could they be placed? They're small.
They're s-
Um, and it seems the trenching's there, why couldn't those be located somewhere else?
We could move those AC units, um, to another location after the fact, when we were reviewing this, we realized these are too close and the bamboo idea would not cover those. And so we would be more than happy to move those either behind the solid wooden fence just a little bit to the south and to the east, so that would be obscured both by vegetation as well as the solid fence.
Yeah, I see they're specked out as ultra-quiet and we use those, myself, other cell towers that I manage, and even though they're ultra-quiet, they make a small humming sound. And we've got elevation 22 across the street. So to me, those are somewhat of a bigger issue because they're right on the property line, they're not in a cabinet, and they're AC units.
Yes.
So they're not being buffered by the shelter.
Are you saying they can be moved behind the fence? Is that what you said?
He's saying they can be moved behind the fence to cover?
They can be moved behind the solid fence, yes.
Aesthetically, that's fine, but even further away would be better.
Yes, and, and that AC, that AC unit there is, isn't very negotiable.
Okay, this, if there aren't any more questions for the applicant, this is a public hearing, so Charlie?
Yes, one more question? I would just like, I would just like to make a few comments in, in response to what the applicant has said and also to, just to clarify a few things. First, a number of you have commented on the inadequacy of the plans. And it's true, there are no elevation drawings, uh, dimensioned or otherwise, except for the little tiny one at the bottom of the, of the tower. We don't really have good plan view or, or elevations. There's no color or material indications or samples for what this cabinet's going to look like. There's no landscape plan. The applicant indicated this is a zoning level set of drawings. Well, perhaps the applicant is not familiar with the requirements for zoning level drawings, but zoning level drawings require a landscape plan as well as color and material samples, dimensioned elevations, all these other kinds of things. If the commission is inclined, inclined to approve this application, either in its current form or in a modified form, staff would recommend that you require them to submit a complete set of detailed plans, including elevations, plan, site plan view, landscape drawings, including species, as well as color and material samples.
Didn't you ask them to do this previously?
Typically, we do. I'm not sure why we didn't get it in this particular case, but I think the commission should get that before you approve anything, if, if you're inclined to approve anything.
We weren't asked for that, but we, we would have.
Second point is on the, um, this landscape plan that was passed out tonight. And by the way, that landscape plan is from the planning approval of the previous application. So that's the level of landscape plan that we typically get with a landscape, with, with a planning level approval. It shows bamboo, clumping bamboo around the tower. I just want to clarify, that, I believe, is new. There, that was not in the approved landscape plan. So that's not in the plan that we have in the file. So I believe that's new. Thirdly, neither I nor the Assistant City Attorney are aware of any city ordinance or policy that requires co-location of cellphone equipment, as the applicant indicated. I don't know where that policy is or where it is in the municipal code. I've never seen it. So just want to clarify that point. Other cities probably have that, but Emeryville doesn't as far as I know. Fourth point I just want to make is that I just want the commission to be aware that, as we indicated previously, all previous cellphone antennas on this tower, of which there are many, have been required to conceal their equipment cabinets in some way. If this permit, if this application is allowed to go forward, you will be setting a precedent for future cellphone antenna equipment. I'm sure there will be more applications because this is a very desirable site for cellphone antennas.
What is the, what precedent will we be setting?
You will be setting the precedent of allowing equipment cabinets to not be concealed from public view, as all the previous ones have been required to be, which will mean in the future, we will likely get applications for more equipment cabinets on this deck. And so you, you might have a proliferation of those in the future. I just want the commission to be aware of that when you?
But we're not bound by precedent.
No, you're not. I'm just saying that it's never been allowed before and it would be a reason to approve them in the future.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. One more.
One more, I'm sorry. So Chair, I would suggest that to the extent that the appellant has comments or a rebuttal based on staff's second round, that they be given that opportunity to respond.
Yes, and if you could remind me of those points, I, I was wanting to comment on each one.
No co-location requirement that I'm aware of. The bamboo on the site plan appears to be new. This would have set a precedent for future applications to have equipment cabinets and we need complete plans.
We would be happy to provide complete plans. And the, the plans that these came from, I personally unrolled the, the original plans and took out L1 to copy the landscape plans. I'd be happy to provide those. They're fully stamped as, um, city plans.
Yeah.
The other point, co-location, it while not, not required, certainly all over, all over towns, people are trying to apply to put new tower, or new antennas on top of buildings wherever it might be. But the general pattern is that co-locations are the desired, the desired pattern. So you're, you are correct in that. I, I did not see a ordinance saying we must co-locate. So that's, that was not a, the correct representation of, that's what I made.
Okay, and your fourth point, Charlie? You had four?
The bamboo maybe? I don't know.
On the, the bamboo as part of the plan, if, I would be very happy to bring in the, the roll of plans that, that show it on it. I copied just, just two of the 40 or 50 pages of the plans because I thought the front with the stamps would be significant and I thought the, the, the first page of three landscape pages would be significant.
Oh, perhaps this, this might be from the construction drawings. It's not in the planning file.
Okay. All right. Okay, with that, since this is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item? Well, seeing no one wishing to speak, we have a very quiet night tonight. Close the public hearing and, um, the council discussion, commission discussion?
I have a question for Charlie. If we denied this, would they have the right to come back to you?
Excuse me?
With complete documents?
Excuse me?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
If we denied this appeal, they could still come back and submit plans that might be acceptable?
Uh, yeah, I believe there's a prohibition against resubmitting an application that is substantially the same within a certain period of time. But if it were different, they could apply again.
So if they were, if it were different in the aspect that it provided more detail that we could actually look at, would that, would you consider that different enough?
Well, I would suggest if you want to do that, that the course of action is probably not to deny it. You do have the right under the zoning ordinance to continue this hearing, to request additional information from us, from staff, and, and therefore from the applicant, and to continue this hearing for 30 days. And then you are required to make a decision within 30 days after closing the hearing. So you don't have to make a decision tonight. You can continue the hearing to a future meeting if you wish. If you do wish to deny it, I don't know, I'd have to look at it, but I would think that if they, if they submit, resubmit the same application just with more detail, I would consider that to be a substantially the same application. If you want more detail, you should continue the hearing.
Um, do we need to take a vote in order to continue the hearing or?
No, you can direct that. The Chair can direct that.
Is there a?
Continuance?
Let me ask you a question. If this were a study session, this would be a great study session, right? We'd be talking about, you know, all these ideas and then the applicant would be coming back. But because it's a public hearing, that's sort of why we're having this conversation about whether they can come back with a?
You can still do that. Same as, same as with a study session?
I think that what we should do is make our comments, give the applicant some guidance, and I would suggest that we continue it to allow them to respond to the comments. So let's hear what the commission's comments might be.
Would they submit it to the staff too, for its review?
Well, it would come back to us. It would come through the staff.
I know, it doesn't make the decision, but staff in the meantime could give us their opinion on these.
What additional information is it that you're looking for?
Well, we have to know what it looks like. We don't even know what it looks like.
The, the container?
Well, we, we would go through comments, but that's?
Right, I think that we need to go through comments because you had a suggestion of lowering the height by sub, undergrounding part of it. We don't know whether that's possible. We don't know whether the parking variance is possible. We don't know.
Okay, so can I give my comments? I'll go first.
Give your comments, Art, please. We want your comments.
Uh, first of all, I'd like to say that I went to the site and I walked around and I think it's, it's a beautiful location. I think they do a tremendous job taking care of it. My feeling is that if they lowered the cabinet several feet into the ground, if we required them to put rows of trellises on the fence, sheltering the cabinet, we'd have an almost identical situation we have at Pixar and I'd feel very comfortable with approving the project with those two conditions, that it be fully screened, that it be lowered, and what was the, and as Frank said, maybe the AC units could be moved behind the fence. I'd feel very comfortable with that. And if we wanted to make that subject to more detailed specifications, I'd be fine with that as well.
Comments, Vanessa?
Well, I think that the point, uh, point is, the important point is that it does set a precedent for the cabinets to be right along the public right-of-way, and, and this is not exactly enlivening the pedestrian experience. And that is disturbing to me. At the same time, I think that there could be some fixes and it actually, if there was a possibility of, of truly wanting to be creative about this particular shelter and make it a very high quality and actually as part of the amenity to the deck, in this case, it, it, it could possibly work. I agree with Frank that the AC units just need to go away. And I actually am very interested in hearing about the possibility, as John Sherman had mentioned, about getting two parking spaces possibly being able to be removed and put it there. That would be much preferable to where it is. That being said, also, I think it still, we would need much more detail and it would need to be very thoughtful and screened with plants, et cetera, possibly even, yeah, just something that actually, if you, if you say you want to be creative, let's see creative. That's a, that's, yeah. And I, and also lowering it would be a good, a good idea.
Chair Donaldson, let me just note, I've heard a couple of comments now about possibly eliminating a couple of parking spaces. I don't think staff would have an issue with that. Of course, it's not our decision at this point. But that, just note that that will also require a parking variance for, for the building because they will then have less than the amount of parking that they need. So we'll help you make the findings for that variance.
But the idea to put, if you use the parking space, is the idea to put it above ground on the parking space or below ground?
I don't know.
You know, that would, to me, putting it in the parking area would completely destroy the whole ambience of the, it's such a beautiful space and right in the middle of it, you're gonna put in this huge container?
I don't think it would?
I think it would? I think it would destroy.
It's a building, it's not a container. It's nine feet high, and it's twenty-five feet long and eight feet wide.
And that's exactly why it shouldn't be in the middle of the deck.
Arlie?
I don't-
Could you put this on the, on the overhead?
I don't think it would be in the middle of the parking lot.
Or that.
I think if, if it were to be, if it were to be in a parking space, I would suggest, yeah, right there, back near the other equipment cabinets.
That last diagonal spot doesn't even look usable with the ramp there.
You might even move the fence so that it's behind the fence like the other ones.
Yeah.
That would be preferable, much preferable.
So-
If you could work that out with the owner, that would be, eliminate a lot of the problems. But John?
Right, that's, basically where it's at right now, to me, is unacceptable. No matter how much you dress it up, the design, the current design was very deliberate. And it's really, I think it's, it's a poster child for what we're trying to achieve in Emeryville. It's like, that's a great creative space of something that's artistic, you know, incorporates the water tower, creates the visibility to the street. This is exactly what we're after. And really, when you bring these pictures up, this is a compelling argument, why we have design guidelines. I mean, this, these are lessons learned. We don't want to do this. And, you know, this is exactly what we want to avoid.
One thing I might also note about the Pixar situation is that as unattractive as those things are, they are screened behind a big green wall, which was required by the commission, I believe, and council. But also, they are integral to the operation of that building. They're part of that building. That building has to have those equipment cabinets. This building doesn't have to have this telephone equipment cabinet.
So I would, you know, definitely be open to something, you know, giving up the parking spaces, getting a variance for parking, reduce the number of parking spaces. And I would think that moving the wall, as Charlie or somebody suggested, to incorporate it with the other equipment back there is, certainly would be the way to go.
It also then doesn't get an issue of architectural appearance either.
Yeah, okay.
Since it's just mechanical equipment here, it's fully exposed, and it can't just be a metal box. And there's no other details that show anything, landscaping, finished material color. Charlie, what worries me is, we're kind of making this into a study session, and-
That's okay. They need to hear your comments.
So they have to come back in thirty days and present something to you and us-
Right.
That we hopefully like, and we have to say yes or no at that point. We can't extend it past that.
No, you can extend it.
We can continue it as many times as we want, I believe.
You must make a decision within thirty days after closing the hearing. But you don't have to close the hearing tonight. You can continue the hearing to the next meeting or the next meeting.
Okay.
Not that we want to drag this on forever, but I'm just saying that's not time pressure.
But it is my intention to continue this, to give the applicant the opportunity to come up with a solution that works for them and works for the city and works for us and-
Good.
You have comments, right?
Yeah. So I, I manage a cell site here in Emeryville, another tower, actually, that's here. And it's a historic building. It's the only national landmark in Emeryville, and it has three carriers in it. This tower, as I know it, and during general plan meetings that I've attended and all the discussions, is also just as significant to Emeryville as this, this tower that I manage. And I agree with John, having walked by there and biked by there yesterday and today, what's happening there now is, is really cool. And I'm so glad I walked in and took a look at it because if I hadn't, I would probably have a different opinion here. The applicant himself, or the presenter himself, said if the bamboo was there, we might be looking and talking about something else because we wouldn't see what's going on back there, and it's all fenced. And we might, I don't know, the decisions might be different. Having said that, it's not there. The landscaping looks great, the deck is awesome, the use of the tower is great, and it's a space, a really cool space. It's too bad it's not used more often, but it, I guess if you had a different tenant, that might be different. At that tower that I manage, at no time were we ever allowed, we never allowed anything on the outside of the building, inside, outside, on the building, on the grounds, anywhere. Whatever had to happen, had to happen inside of the tower and hidden from view. And they were very creative. You look at the tower, and you wouldn't know what's an antenna or not. I'll tell you, the steeple that looks like a steeple is an antenna. The windows that look like windows are antennas. And the boxes and the AC units are inside and mounted to the side of the tower. There's no rooms or floors in there, there's just ladders that get to these things. So they've done, those three carriers did a great job of being creative.
I wonder if you could put the stuff inside the water tower?
We talked about that, Charlie and I talked about that yesterday, is putting it inside the water tower. You know, who knows? Maybe it's already full of concrete. But, you know, it did, used to hold water, and that would be a lot heavier than, than this equipment. But I realize that this room, this shelter, and that's why I'm surprised that they said they could lower it, because people, workers go in there, not just once a month. It's like almost every day, especially at the beginning. At the beginning, they're tinkering, they're in there a lot, they're tinkering. But then it's maybe once a week, once a month, and then it tails off. But they're in and out of that door, they're working inside this very sterile environment kind of in there, and they're working on their equipment. So it has to be, it has to be accessible in that way.
Three different companies that are using the same space?
No, this, this shelter would just be for AT&T. The other equipment is back there behind the building.
No, no, in your building.
Oh, yeah. And they all come into the tower.
Okay.
Anyway, having said all that, it would be, I agree with John, I missed your comment, but it would seem to me, Emeryville in general is a transportation hub. Reducing parking is what we want to do, and get people biking and walking to work, and eliminating parking spaces for this sort of thing. If the owner is okay with it, I think I would certainly be okay with it. If they can lose the spaces, especially back here where they look, that one, if that's the way it is, is completely unusable. There's no turning radius there. I'll tell you right now, it's not usable if it's like that.
Is that trash enclosure that's back there?
It looks like it.
I'm not sure.
I mean, it's usable, it's always usable. By code, it's not usable. I just want to point out the, the letter, and I'm glad Arlie and Charlie sort of went through it and defended themselves a bit. It's a pretty strong, you know, legal basis, arbitrary discriminating, it's some strong language for us, for, for Emeryville and this commission. You know, we're not discriminating, and we try to be as open as possible. So I'm glad it was, you guys seem like nice folks, and it was a very good presentation. So sort of downplayed that a little bit. You showed us some pictures. I'll tell you, one of the pictures is our recreation center. And-
We're proud of the program.
And we're proud of it. So thanks for taking pictures of our beautiful recreation center.
That's very nice.
But I agree with Charlie, and maybe somebody else mentioned it, the screens that were approved for Pixar eventually will be completely covered. If you came in here with elevations and drawings and landscape drawings of some big green screens that were covering all that, again, that might be a little bit of a different discussion. But we're just talking about maybes and possibilities.
Okay, so my comments are that I'm not entirely against having a structure at that deck location. It would be interesting to see whether you could break it up so that there might be other places that you could look through. I just have a problem with doing a design review when we don't have a design to review because we can't actually see what it's going to look like. So we, we need to have a lot more information, a lot more detail. I mean, I do want to note that it is at least eight feet back from the sidewalk. It's not budding up to, it's not zero lot line thing here. It is six feet behind the fence and another two feet of planting in front of the fence. So it's not as looming as it might seem. But that said, I would love to see if there were some way that you could reduce the mass, make it look interesting, make it something attractive. I think that that site, that corner either needs to be transparent or really attractive. So I would like to continue this matter for, until the next time, and allow you to come back with some more information. Perhaps you can get something worked out that you can move it around the south side of the building. That would be fantastic. If not, maybe you can come up with something that would actually look acceptable, that we could understand what we're looking at, so.
Chair, can you take a stab, count on the, on the parking variance with these six? Just to see if we're, who's, I know John and I are open to it, but who else is open to-
Who would like to go for having-
Would be open to a parking variance to locate it in the back?
Yeah, I would be.
You would be?
I would be.
Okay, we're all open to that.
That's a piece of information to take back to the owner, because it's the owner who is not like-
Are you going to let them decide whether they want to improve what's there or move it to the parking lot? That'll be their decision to make.
Well, I think we, most of us would wish it to be moved to the parking area.
Yeah.
But if it isn't, they're going to have to bring back all the designs.
Then they have to reduce the mass and show us a-
A design.
Real drawing of what it's going to be.
I would also note that you're under no obligation to approve this application. And if the owner is, objects to losing the two parking spaces, you could take the position that that's all you will approve. And it, and you won't approve it in the current location, in which case the owner has a choice to make. Either they can have, you know, an equipment cabinet and lose the parking spaces, or they don't get it at all. I'm just suggesting.
Okay, given the-
That is a position you could take, if you wish to.
Given the fact that we don't have a design in front of us, can I just get a sense from the commission about what your inclination would be so that the applicant knows?
I assume we're not saying it has to be in the parking lot.
I am saying that.
I am saying it.
You're saying what? It does have to be in the parking lot?
It has to be in the parking lot. I'm not open to having it in the same location.
So that's two, on your sense?
I'm, I'm open to it being under the tower, but I'd have to see these changes made and the AC unit's gone and some rendering. But I'm open to it.
I strongly prefer that the, all the equipment be together in the back of the building. And it would have to be really wonderfully creative for me to be open to it on the deck.
But you're not ruling it out?
Yes.
Nope, not ruling it out.
And you're not ruling it out.
Okay, so I think that you have a sense of what the commission's feelings are that-
Four people say they're not ruling it out, and two say absolutely no.
Right, and there's one other commissioner who's not here, so.
Right, I'd just like to note that, that there is a seventh commissioner who is absent tonight, Stephen Steinberg. He can participate in the future deliberations on this project. We don't know what his position or opinions are, since he's not here. He will need to review the recording of this meeting.
Will he be able to participate in the future?
Yes, as I just said, he will be able to participate in the future, provided that he reviews the recording of this meeting.
I think no matter what happens, if you go for the variance or come back for this extension to this public hearing, bring the specs for the, for the, for the shelter, the actual specifications from the manufacturer that you're buying it from. That would give us the clear dimensions and all that.
Well, in addition to that, we want the-
Oh, I'm saying, they're going to bring all that. Well, yeah, they know they're going to bring all that. I'm saying the actual specs could be added.
I'm not sure this is a manufactured product. I think it's a thing that they're designing and building.
Okay, well, yeah.
So all the more reason to have detailed design drawings with color and material samples. And staff can help them to understand what the submittal requirements will be.
And it sounds like you'll have a much easier road to hoe if you come back with the shelter around the south side of the building. And barring that, we'll see what transpires.
So do you want to continue this to the next meeting?
Is that enough time for you to work things out, or do you want two months?
Well, bear in mind, we are going to need the submittal a minimum of two weeks before the meeting. Our packet goes out a week before the meeting, and our staff reports have to be drafted two weeks before the meeting. So we really need to revise plans more like three weeks before the meeting, which is like a week from now.
Okay, then I'm going to continue this item to the-
September.
September calendar, and look forward to seeing you then. Good luck. Okay, so that item is continued, and now we're on to our last item on the public hearing calendar. Thank you for your time.
I have to recuse myself from this item because-
You're buying the building?
I'm not buying that building. But I manage a building within five hundred feet of this building that I have a vested interest in at 3900 Adeline. And I recuse myself on the original approval of that building, so. And because this is the last item, can I excuse myself from the meeting?
As long as you don't have any commissioner comments.
I have no commissioner comments. I like you guys. I like all you guys. And I'm, I'm sorry, Stephen wasn't here.
So, um-
You can go earlier and bring donors next time.
Thanks, Frank. Thanks for being great.
Do we have a housing committee meeting?
Okay, Maru.
Good evening, commission members. This is a second project today that relates to approval that you did, well, a few years ago. This is the Golden Gate Lock and Key Building. In December of 2007, the commission approved a ninety-four unit condo project, and that included the demolition of this building. Technically, this is, these are two buildings, but for all practical purposes, I'm looking at it as one building, which, which is significant, but just so that you know. As a result of the economic recession that we are undergoing, the project did not move forward, and the property was foreclosed. Between December of last year and May of this year, the agency has purchased the site, and the city is now requesting to demolish all the buildings on the site as they are structurally unstable and have become a target for graffiti and vandalism. This is kind of the existing pictures, well, not existing, but a few months ago. It just kind of along MacArthur. This building that's in front of you, this is not the significant building, but it's, but this one, the yellow one is. As I mentioned, this building is considered significant, and it requires city council approval for its demolition. The council could approve demolition only in conjunction with the replacement structure that met certain criteria. However, however, this, this regulation was modified by the council on July of this year so that the approval for immediate demolition was, is now possible if it was found that such a demolition is in the best interest of public health, welfare, and safety. The building division assisted in a structural assessment of the building in May of this year and did conclude that the building was unstable. In addition, there have been several incidents of vandalism and graffiti and trespassing remain ongoing issues. Given these factors, we believe that the structure has become an attractive nuisance that is detrimental to the general public. And therefore, we are recommending that the commission recommend that the council make the finding that the demolition of the Golden Gate Lock and Key Buildings is in the best interest of the public health, welfare, and safety. With that, I conclude my presentation. If there are any questions, I would be happy to answer that. I'd just like to note one more thing that's in the staff report. It's mentioned that the intention is to demolish the buildings and secure the site with a wrought iron fence. This, at this point, I've been informed that may not necessarily be the case due to financial reasons. So it will be secured by a fence, but what type of the fence at this moment remains undetermined.
Could you explain how this building could have been judged significant?
Well, there are a number of criterias. I don't have it on me right now, but it, it is in a bad state.
But it was never anything special, it was just a building.
Well, I would note that there are thirteen specific criteria for what constitutes a significant building. This particular building was previously approved for demolition by the city council as a significant building in conjunction with a replacement project. So by making that finding, the council was de facto determining that, yes, this was in fact a significant building.
God, it just looks like nothing at all.
That's a moot point. We don't, we don't, that's not before.
No, I was just curious to know.
Do you have to open a public hearing?
Well, are there questions for staff?
And we should note that Catherine Firpo from Economic Development and Housing, who is the city's project manager for this project, and who gets the job of maintaining this property, is here and is able to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to hear from-
I'd like to hear from, about the structural instability, because, and whether it's both buildings or one building or the whole, we got no information on that.
The, there's two buildings. One is a unreinforced masonry building. That's the building that faces San Pablo. Do you want to put that here? That has, the brick facade has, is starting to break up, and some of it is leaning towards the San Pablo sidewalk. It also has significant problems with the roof. The roof is beginning to collapse. I'm talking about this building here. This is the San Pablo facade. It, it looks like one big building, but I want to point out that it is in fact two separate buildings. This building is a large warehouse, and the roof is completely collapsing. In fact, in one place, the, the support for the ceiling is completely rotten and is in parts, and the roof has collapsed in. So, the, if somebody were to be in that building, and it is very, it's become very difficult to secure. We have, constantly have people breaking in. You know, they could be, they could be injured by the, both of the roof structures in both the buildings.
So on all, it, it looks like, so there's one building that goes along West MacArthur. Is that also a part, that's the one to the, yeah?
This is 1025 West MacArthur. We own this building, and we intend to demolish it. It is not currently, well, hasn't been, it hasn't been reviewed for structural integrity. But that is not a significant building, so it doesn't need city coun, it doesn't need council or planning commission approval for demolition. This, we're here tonight to talk about these two buildings.
Right. Was there any evaluation done on what it would take to stabilize the building along San Pablo's frontage? The number one building?
Well, the, I believe the inspection of this building was conducted by you, right? And the chief building official, and one of the building inspectors, and was Guy in there as well? Guy Sinnerotney, our, our buildings plans examiner? So basically, all the big guns from the building division went out and looked at this building and assessed it. And I don't recall exactly what was said about it, but I know there was a write-up in our monthly progress report a couple of months ago about it, where the building official listed a number of things that needed to be done if the building was to be made structurally stable. And there was quite a bit of work to be done. He didn't conclude that it was an imminent hazard. If he had concluded that, that it was an imminent hazard to health and safety, he could have ordered its immediate demolition, notwithstanding this ordinance. He didn't conclude that it was that bad. But it is, you know, not very structurally sound, and would require a lot of work to stabilize it, which seems like a waste of money, considering that this redevelopment agency is considering a future housing project on this site that likely would not include this building, and that the city council has previously approved its demolition.
So the, and also, we did discuss ways of stabilizing the brick facade. And the best way to stabilize the brick facade is actually to take the bricks out. And so that would, you know, impact it, to actually just remove the bricks that are in the portions that are, that are crumbling.
Which would eliminate one of the significance criteria.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Catherine?
Is the billboard a part of the redevelopment agency's property?
Yes. The redevelopment agency owns the billboard. It will not be demolished at this time. We will continue to receive the rent from it.
So you get some money to maintain the property?
Yeah. And then it will, it's on a month, monthly lease. There's, so we will be able to demolish it, similar to where the ambassador is right now. We will be able to demolish it once we have a project.
In the meantime, you get some money.
That's correct.
Out of the three, the one along San Pablo is the only significant front. That's the only-
Well, the, the, I, my understanding is both building, both this facade and this facade are part of the significant, even though there are two separate buildings. But the whole property is considered significant.
Where is the city boundary line?
The city boundary line goes like this. This building is probably 80% in Oakland. This part of the open space is in Oakland, and this, these buildings are entirely in Emeryville.
Did you have a question, Vanessa?
No.
Okay. Well, this is a public hearing. So if, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? No? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing.
I move we approve the demolition.
Let's second it.
Discussion?
Just have one sort of comment. I hate to see it just be a chain link fence, weed-infested zone for a while. So if there's any potential for having a public art project in there as a temporary measure until this redevelopment actually happens, that would be really great. Or even a temporary, uh-
The site is, does have hazardous materials in the soil, and will be, we are, we have just received a grant to do an assessment of what that would take. And then we will also, we apply for a grant, we're going to apply for a grant to the EPA to do the cleanup. So I'm not sure how long, I mean, there'll be a lot of activity at the site. So, I mean, that's a question of how we, how we end up working through all those issues.
Well, just to, just as mention for that.
So you don't know the extent of the contamination? Is it, is it throughout the site under the building? Do you know? You have to make the assessment.
It is mostly in this warehouse area here. I do not know what the, what's there. The buildings themselves contain quite a bit of hazardous materials, which will help be worked into the demolition, of how you remove the hazardous materials.
Did prior owner do any analysis of the?
No, don't believe so. We, the, the analysis was, the analysis of the, of the soil was done prior to purchasing, and then we have since done, hired somebody to do hazardous materials within the buildings analysis. So we do know what's in the buildings.
Because they had submitted to us a very detailed building design for plan approval.
The Sadowitz plan?
Yeah. And I would have thought they would have had, done some analysis of the cost of cleaning up.
I'm, I'm not familiar, I, I'm not-
I don't think they got that far.
No, I don't.
They, they didn't get very far. They get their planning approvals, and that was kind of the end of it.
They did the, they did this very elaborate design without any economic analysis?
Well, maybe that's why it's no longer a project.
Okay. So I believe there is a motion on the floor in a second.
Yep. Ready to vote?
Ready to vote.
So this is to approve the staff recommendation? Commissioner Cardoza?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Coomerly?
Aye.
Commissioner Sherman?
Aye.
Chair Donaldson?
Reluctantly, aye.
Five ayes. We will forward your recommendation to the city council.
Okay. So that wraps that part of the meeting up. Are there any commissioner comments? All right. Then I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much.